Good morning, welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on KUBU Radio 96.5 FM. Today's meeting replays Friday, September 27th at 6:00 PM on Metro Cable 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrol cable 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during the Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think it is the duty of every board chair to add two sentences to every one of your announcements. I haven't done that yet, so just so we can get longer, that would be fantastic. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
First item, please.
Your first item are off-agenda comments, and we currently have 22 signed up to speak. I'm going to put up their names. If we could have Sandy, please come to the podium.
Seeing as how we have 22 speakers, I would ask respectfully if the speakers would keep an eye on the list that's to my right and to my left and be prepared to come up as soon as the speaker before you is finished.
Okay. For everybody and the sheriff, too.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Good morning Chair Kennedy. Thank you so much for giving us his time to speak with you. Thank you for being public servants of the people, for having taken your oaths to uphold and defend our constitutions, both the state and federal. We are coming to you this morning in peace, as we the people, to give you notice and instruction so that you and your agents may provide due care. This notice of recognition of abused power and nullified actions is being given to you as our elected representatives and serves to inform you of the recent US Supreme Court decision, Loper Bright versus Department of Commerce, which held Chevron doctrine is overruled. The people are aware that no government official, from the lowest level to that of President of the United States, has immunity for acts that are not covered by an express grant of power in the state and federal constitutions. When government servants act outside of the constraints of their delegated authority, those actions are null and void, and they can be held liable as they are not acting within their official capacity. Please take notice that the people have assembled together, consulted peaceably by right, and realized that our servants have been led to believe that they can generate the basic rules of governance. However, the people now know that the foundational law in the Constitution are the rules which must be followed with exact due regard. My colleague will continue.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Dave Capazano, and I'm with We the People. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Please take notice that the California Constitution, Article 1, Section 7, a person may not be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law or denied equal protection of the laws. Maxim of Law 46D states where the law prescribes a form and nonobservance of it is fatal to the proceeding and the whole becomes nullity. Maxim of Law 77F states, no freedom shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property but by the law judgment of his peers or by the law of the land that is by the common law. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, private property, and public liberties. The government just serves for our benefit as public officers, trustees, and servants of the people. Since the Board has a history of enforcing ordinances and code without due process, we are very concerned that this will keep occurring in our fair county. We request immediate action to be taken by each of you to swiftly review all county agencies' rules, regulations, and policies and ensure that due process of law and trial by jury are always followed in each case as it pertains to common law under the Constitution. In addition, we request openly declare these acts were void and immediately returned to all has been unlawfully taken from the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning Board, I will continue. I'm Debbie Woolley, one of We the People. As an elected official, do you believe that it is your duty to always uphold the republican form of government, which includes due process of law with a trial by jury as written in the Constitution? Or do you believe that you have been granted authority to deviate from the Constitution? If so, please show constitutional authority granting you that power to change the form of the people's government within 15 days sworn under penalty of perjury by affidavit and post this granted authority conspicuously notifying the public and all agents, or you agree by acquiescence that all statements in this notice to be truth and fact. If you cannot show where you got the constitutional authority and you continue to take action against the people's rights without due process, your actions will be construed as being done with malice intent, full knowledge, and purposeful transgression against your trust and indenture, your contract with the people, and that would be the Constitution. This notice is given to you in peace and with the love of Christ that you and your agents may provide due care to those who have all political power, the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, agreed.
Good morning Supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is Rosemary, one of the We the People. I would like to let you know that our Community Constitution Day celebration on September 15th in Folsom was a great success. We'd like to give a special thanks to you Supervisor Sue Frost for being in attendance. We're also planning a third annual celebration and hope to see you all there next year. Thank you and have a wonderful day. God bless you.
Thank you.
Amen.
When the founding fathers wrote the Constitution, the goal was to create a system of checks and balances in order to prevent tyranny. This is a separation of powers so that no one branch of government could accumulate more power than the other two. To this day, the executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch are the three branches of government that protects the rights of each American citizen. The tyranny that was meant to be prevented is running rampant in many of the states today. The introduction of mail-in ballots and faulty voting machines is the beginning to the end of free elections in California. Our out-of-control government is responsible for the most corrupted elections in California history. The current leadership at every level, state, county, and city governments, all have been complicit in this state's evil laws and policies. I will give just a few privileges of the United States citizenship, the right to assemble peacefully and to petition the national government for redress of grievances, to vote in national elections, and I say with emphasis, to have one's vote counted properly. There are talks going around that there will be an effort to sabotage the election. May New California State and the Sacramento Board of Supervisors work together to take the necessary steps in order to save the people's voice. May the Sacramento Board of Supervisors no longer remain complicit in the downfall of California's elections. As God is before us, we the people of New California State, we the people of California, and the Sacramento Board of Supervisors must realize that steps must be taken today in order to save our free elections in California. If we lose free elections in California, the rest of America will follow. What do the Sacramento Board of Supervisors want to be remembered by? Do you want to be remembered as the supervisors that saved California's free elections? Or do you want to be known as the supervisors that threw America under the bus? As President Lincoln once said, "Do not interfere with our Constitution." That must be maintained, for it is the only safeguard of our liberties.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jim Reeves, New State of California. As you know, debt-to-income ratio was above 30% is considered to be in bankruptcy territory. The United States has a debt-to-income ratio of 130%, plus or minus. This is a record high. We are not in a war and supposedly in an economic expansion. However, we are still building the debt in this economic expansion. What happens if we have an economic decline? I wouldn't expect the feds to bail out California anytime soon. California has about $160 billion on balance sheet debt. California's revenue is somewhere in the neighborhood of $240 billion. This puts the debt-to-income ratio at around 60%. This is double the above-mentioned debt-to-income ratio of 30%. Overall, this is a bankruptcy status, however, it's against the law for California to declare bankruptcy. So the question is, how soon will California go into default due to lack of funds? How does the impact Sacramento County? What are your reserves, 1%, 2%, 3%, 5%? How many days of operating capital do you have in reserve? One week, maybe two? With this looming financial crisis at hand, why are you spending just shy of $20 per machine cast ballot that takes up to 29 days before an election and another 30 days after the election to finalize the results? This is a 59-day window using high-speed computers to quote-unquote facilitate the process when you could be only spending $1.85 with one-day paper ballots. As of 6/20/24, Sacramento County had 872,222 registered voters. The county's expenditures will be roughly $17.5 million, plus or minus, for the mail-in out, for the mail-out machine cast ballots, or $1,613,000. For one-day cast ballots, one-day paper ballots would save the taxpayers nearly $16 million. Now, all of these citizens coming here to ask you for dollars, they now know this. There's accountability for funds spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Lynn Reeves.
Good morning.
Thank you. California is broke, and the November election is rapidly approaching. All California county boards, including ours, need to recognize that the elections belong to the citizens, not the county officials, and certainly not the state or federal entities. That said, Sacramento County is still determined to pay nearly $20 to mail each ballot to approximately 820,000 registered voters, rather than paying only $1.85 for one-day paper ballots to be picked up at the voting venues. This could be a savings of approximately $15 million. And that is just for the ballots. What about the cost of using the voting machines? They cost an inordinate amount of money that you do not have. Where are you planning to get the money for these outlandish expenditures? In addition to the cost, these voting machines will not secure our vote. In fact, they have been proven to betray us. We need to go back to one-day voting at small precincts where ballots cast can be hand-counted immediately after the polls close, and we can have the results of our election that night. Waiting up to 27 days is unacceptable. Bottom line, you took an oath to follow the US Constitution, which states that federal elections are a one-day event. Therefore, you need to follow it and return our elections to We the People. County money is dwindling, and the amount of money that you could be saving by eliminating the mailing of the ballots and removing the electronics from our voting systems is astounding. In addition, it would be a great step toward having our county citizens regain confidence in our elections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is Perry Ferrucci. I'm a volunteer for New California State. Today I have a two-minute summary of the Sacramento County Grand Jury News Release dated June 28th, 2024. Sloppy staff work and agenda hide-and-seek taint the Board of Supervisors' 2023 pay raise. Miscrucial details, an uncorrected math error, and an astounding lack of transparency are among the significant problems the 2023-24 Sacramento County Grand Jury found when it investigated the process used by the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to award themselves a hefty salary increase in 2023. A critical math mistake in the informational packet given to the Board led some of the supervisors and the public to initially think that they were approving a 20% raise. It turned, in fact, to 36%. The error was discovered after the Board of Supervisors voted on the raise. Even more concerning than the math miscalculation is the choice of county staff not to update the Board with the correct information after the fact. Among other things, it raises the question of how many other times mistakes and facts presented at Board meetings are never publicly corrected. The county directed the salary increase to start 30 days after the final vote, but California Government Code, Section 25123.5, maintains a 60-day wait. State law allows such a wait to provide time for voters, if they so choose, to organize a referendum to overturn the decision. The Grand Jury recommended seven actions the Board of Supervisor and county executive team can take to improve the process. Among them was the county form a citizen-based compensation commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning Board of Supervisors. So I've mentioned in the past, I've worked in outreach for nearly the last five years. And that said, I wanted to cite off some statistics for us here in Sacramento. Based on data from the US Census Bureau, the FBI Uniform Crime Report, and a couple others, here's some of the ratings that Sacramento has. A D+ in schooling, test scores are 29% lower than the US average, student-to-teacher ratio is 27% higher, graduation rates are below average. As for crime in Sacramento, this has been more of my focus because I see it on the streets. Your chance of becoming a victim is 1 in 25. So when you're walking the block back to your vehicle, you or one of the 24 people you see is likely to become a victim of crime. So this makes your chance of becoming a victim 75% higher than the US average, which is pretty crazy. And your over-year crime is 19%. These statistics are for violent or property crime, which account for 65% and 35% of these statistics respectively. Furthermore, Sacramento has experienced a staggering 600% increase in human trafficking cases listed in 2018 compared to the previous years, and is also listed among the 13 highest intensity child exploitation areas nationwide. This was also cited by Polaris Project, and it's a severe problem, as mentioned, by the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office. Ideally, the purpose of lawmaking is to disincentivize crime through retribution so that the likelihood of offense is zero. Knowing criminally-minded people or those who are desensitized to acts of lawlessness and exploitation become quite creative in the ways that they imagine benefit from taking advantage of others. And they become quite good at it if they believe they're able to do so unabated. The philosophy that's being employed on law here is failing us, I think it's failing you. I don't think it makes you all look very good. And the ramifications, all of the community has to experience it. It's not cool, right? You guys see it when you walk down the streets.
Thank you.
Change things up.
Thank you.
Good morning Board.
Good morning.
We're here again to ask why? Why you have not chosen a decentralized, local precinct, historically-proven, secure voting system for our county? Why? Last time I was here, I said at least 60% of the voters of this country being polled now no longer believe that our election system is transparent. That's serious. Because this gets to the heart of being a free people. Americans need confidence that they're able, by voting, to elect their own representatives to rule over them without concerns of fraud or stolen election, that is, a selection by others. So what do we currently have right now? We have a centralized system of unsecured ballots universally mailed out October 9th, unsecured drop boxes, unsecured machine processing, which we now, it's been well demonstrated, they're proven that they can be hacked, the machines, the voting machines. They can be internally programmed, this has come to light very recently in Pennsylvania and Ohio, to change the votes internally in the voting machines. And also, they can be connected to the internet to cheat. With this current system, there is no secure chain of custody. Now, I showed you this last time. This is the destroyer that my father served on in World War II, after America was attacked and the 7th Fleet was pretty much destroyed in Pearl Harbor. Now, why did he do that? To preserve freedom to his posterity. Now, two generations later, our free people are being attacked by vote, by other means, or by other means, as our fundamental freedoms are elected. So I just want to know, why are you doing this?
Thank you.
Okay. Just one sentence, to undermine our basic right to vote with transparency as a free people, is this not treason?
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Sarah Mattson, and a lifelong Californian and a new Californian since 2002, when I realized that California became tyrannical. It's broken its pact to We the People. They no longer represent, they're a uniparty system. And I think we could also agree, last time I was here, or two times ago, I gave everybody a Constitution, that the Constitution is true and correct. And I respectfully know that you, my Board of Supervisors, know the Constitution. The Constitution, in the Second Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment, protects our right to vote and says that elections are one day, not a season, 29 days before, 27 days after. And further, Congress designated the second Tuesday in November as that one day to vote, requesting voting in one day, knowing this result at the end of the day, and doing it on paper, requesting voter ID. It further states in the Constitution that US citizens are eligible and naturalized citizens are eligible to vote. The greatest honor in my life, I realized recently as an educator, like many of you, maybe you've had other careers prior to being Board of Supervisors, I'm an educator. My father was my first student when I was eight years old. He became a naturalized citizen from Mexico, and I taught him how to read and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So when he stood up, he could do so. It was the proudest day on Election Day. He would wear his suit and go vote. We the people standing here behind you, we're united. It's time you join us and be united with us. Are you going to be part of the future? You have the right, you have the...
Thank you.
...approval to make it one day, voting one day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor.
Madam Clerk, we have any other public comment?
We do not. That concludes your public comments for off-agenda.
Okay, that takes us to consent.
Yes, for your consent matters, Items 2 through 42, and also for your addendum item, I'm going to ask the Board to drop the addendum item, please.
So move. Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then I have a couple of announcements. For Item 7, you are authorizing the Director of Personnel Services to negotiate and execute an agreement with the Sacramento Area Sewer District for Personnel-related Services and Obligations and introduce an ordinance amending Section 2.78.759 of the Sacramento County Code related to payment of vacation, holiday, and lieu and sick leave balances for employees who accept employment with the Sacramento Area Sewer District. Waive full reading and continue to October 8th for adoption. For Item 16, you're introducing an ordinance amending Section 16.86.130 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the initial credit and reimbursement program for construction of dedication of right-of-way for in advance funding of metro airpark public facilities and related costs. Waive full reading and continue to October 8th for adoption. For Item 26, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, adopting an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 3.50 of the Sacramento County Water Agency Code, increasing water service fees and adding Appendix 2 to the fee summary table. You waive reading and continue this from September the 10th. And for Item 33, you are adopting an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 6.30 of the Sacramento County Code, protection of drinking water, cross-connection prevention, requesting to... this was waived on September 10th.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to just offer some comments on Item 4.
Okay, for Item 4, I'll read that into the record. This is to approve the reallocation of 250,000 in the American Rescue Plan Act funding to Downtown Sacramento Partnership.
Very good, thank you. And while I'm making my comments, I'd invite Mr. Alt to come down to the podium. So my comments will be brief. I want to extend my sincere thanks to our county executive, David Villanueva, and Amanda and her team for thinking very creatively about how we can assist with funding to extend and enhance what the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, capably led by Mr. Alt, is doing to really focus on the blocks around and near the County Administration Center in light of some unfortunate incidents that we've had recently, especially, but certainly given kind of the existing challenge that we have following the pandemic with ensuring that the downtown part of our, not just city, but of our region continues to be a place that welcomes people and is safe and is clean. So I know this action today, which I suspect will be passed without incident, offers another quarter million dollars towards that mission. So I want to thank again our staff and would give the floor to Mr. Alt if he has any... So I want to thank again our staff, and would give the floor to Mr. Alt if he has any comments.
You have 30 seconds.
Absolutely. Supervisor Serna, Chair Kennedy, members of the Board, these funds are absolutely going to be critical for us. I've got a couple of members of our staff here, and Lance McDaniel, who runs our community service programs. One of the things that these funds are going to allow us to do is increase capacity in and around, not just the county buildings, but around the core of downtown, addressing some of the clean and safe efforts. We've got a new courthouse opening up. We know there's a lot of employees and also jurors that come in. We've had a challenging couple of years, and this Board has continued to lean in and support not only our organization, but downtown, and these funds will add to our efforts to really make this a clean and safe environment, and we appreciate your support genuinely very much. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alt. I see no other Board members. Is there any member of the public that has any comment on an item that's on the consent calendar?
No public comment.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Unanimous vote with those members present, with the exception of the addendum item. Okay, for your first presentation, Item 43, this is the Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming October 2024 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month.
Thank you, set of staff, for being here today.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Matt Sato, Director of Department of Water Resources. And this year in 2024, the department has the honor of leading the Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign. This year, we're going to be assisted by Chris Flores in Agriculture, Weights and Measures Department, as well as Lisa Travis in County Council, who will be co-chairing with us. So this year's theme, and as you all know, the Employee Giving Campaign is so important for us, it's a chance for Sacramento County employees to give back to where the organizations, our community. This year, we thought the theme would be very appropriate, growing together and giving back. Our goal this year is going to be to raise $200,000 in the month of October. We're going to do this through a combination of employee pledges. Departments typically do fundraisers and different things to raise money during the month. I'll give a plug for Department of Water Resources. We do a burrito fest right around Halloween, and we're looking to hopefully raise $1,500 through that this year. So with that, and also, at the end of the month, October 31st, we'll finish off with the Employee 5K, which is, again, a really good fundraiser towards this effort. I'm going to give a quick plug, just for the Elgro Food Bank, and the only reason I'm doing that is I had a chance about a month ago to volunteer there and really see firsthand the good work that they're doing, incredible organization, what they're doing for the community. That's certainly where my money and pledge is going to be going. But we had a presentation by all the federations we deal with, and I have to tell you, there are so many worthy causes. It's going to be very difficult for people to choose, and I think one of our federation partners said it the best, just find something that speaks to you and give. Every dollar counts. So, thank you. I just wanted to say that, again, we're honored and excited to run the Employee Giving Campaign in October, looking forward to smashing that $200,000 goal.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the work you're doing. I think the newer directors that come to the county get to draw the short straw and run this thing. But I know work goes between, and it's not just you, but a lot of work goes from our employees, and it's really great work for our community. Thank you.
Thanks. That thought crossed my mind.
Next item.
Okay, for Item 44, this is the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls presentation.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Is this working?
Yes.
Hi, county executive. On behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, we're here today, want to thank the Chair and the Board for offering us this time. We know you have a very busy schedule, and we appreciate the time to present our How Are the Women and Girls of Sacramento County data project with our friends from Sacramento State Institute of Social Research, led by Shannon Williams and her team is with us, Flor, and who's done most of the work on this project. I also want to thank and acknowledge the California Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, which gave us a grant on the state of California, the California Commission's Women's Recovery Response Grant, which made this work possible. So thank you to the state commission, thank you to our partners. And you have, here with me, we have our new leadership team, which I'll introduce to you in a minute. But before presenting the data, we want to share a few quick commission highlights and updates, and I want to introduce our new Chair of the Commission, Tamisa Wash, who worked for many years at WE even, has been one of the founding members of the Commission as well. Our new Treasurer-Secretary, Tracy Stuckroth from District 1, Tamisa's from District 2. And our Vice Chair is from your district, Supervisor Frost, District 4. She's a wonderful addition to our Commission, Rachel Williams. So we've got the appointed commissioners, who ended up, by happenstance, on our leadership team, probably no surprise there to all of you, and we're thrilled that our leadership team is moving forward. So I will just let them say a few remarks, and then we'll come back to our presentation.
Good morning, and thank you all for joining us today. We are so excited to be able to present to you on the data, on the status of women and girls, and just all that we've been able to accomplish with all the support we've received from you all. I am excited that you'll be able to see this presentation today, and I'll provide some closing remarks. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Of course, I want to thank you all for the support that you give to the Commission. And I'm stepping in brand-new as Treasurer-Secretary this year, and it's just been so great. The work that we are doing is going to be based on this presentation, so you'll see a lot of activity from our work groups within the Commission on this presentation. So I'm looking forward to getting your feedback. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think it shows that we're in good stead, that the Commission is, you know, relatively new, but we're moving forward. So thank you for your support. All right, so I want to just give you a quick update about the work of the Commission. The slides, can I control the slides?
Yes, you can.
Oh, fabulous, okay. So some highlights from 23, 24. Thanks to you, we've had four new commission appointments and two youth commissioners. We have three youth commissioners on our Commission, which we're very proud of, one of whom also sits on the Youth Commission and liaisons with us. We have been meeting monthly in our communities, so we're very proud of the fact that we go and visit sites and organizations that are serving women and girls. We learn from them at each meeting, and we then incorporate them into our work going forward. And then we're building community connections. We have a biannual Sacramento Women Elected Leaders Celebration that happened in January 2023, seems like yesterday, but new women will be elected in November, and we're going to celebrate them on January 29th. You're all invited to our next biannual celebration. And you know about our Women and Girls Festival, and we had a wonderful exhibit at the Sacramento County Museum this year, or last year actually, sowing of stories, and you can see the picture there. So we are building community connections in many ways, and we're also moving forward on our substantive work with the support of the California State Commission grant, which I referenced a minute ago. That grant is now expired, and we've been really pleased to have that support. We don't have that kind of support going forward, but we're going to leverage it as we can and keep going. We do have with us today Emily Pham, who is also been really supportive in her role, thanks to the grant, as an Assistant to the Friends of the Commission. And Emily, if you would just stand up and say hello. She's been a great part of the work and the efforts in the community, and if you see the male chimps and the communications that we have in the community, Emily's been responsible for a lot of that. So then our substantive work about building our work plan, we've really been moving forward with that, and this is our priorities for 2024 and going into 2025. Understanding the status of women and girls so that we can help advise you more in-depth as we move forward on the status, and this work with the data indicators with SacState is a big part of that. We've begun that work. Today, you're going to see a presentation that's derived from tables, over 50 tables of data that they've collated together for us. And I think that's just the beginning of what we hope to do in terms of understanding the status of women and girls. Of course, we're going to continue our listening out in the community and build on what we did in the Blue Ribbon Commission, and we have plans in 2025 to move forward on that to build a resource hub, a digital resource hub. So stay tuned for that. And then with the Childcare Coalition, you all know of the new Sacramento County Childcare Coalition, it's been the last year and a half or so, and we're helping them with an FAQ on the status of childcare in Sacramento County. That will be out later this fall, so stay tuned for that. Supporting women and girls, we're going to dive deeper into the budget in the periods to come, so you'll see more of us on that. We're working with the Sacramento County Childcare Coalition, the Domestic Violence Prevention Council. We now attend and sit on that and contribute. Rachel Williams is our liaison, Vice Chair Rachel Williams, and myself to that prevention council. And then the next step we're going to be pursuing is older women housing and homelessness, and how we can help support women who are on the verge of falling into homelessness. We are having discussions about how we might best contribute to that, and we look forward to that. We know that as the demographics, you'll hear in the data about the demographics, I'm sure you know that a quarter of our population is about to be baby boomers next year, the last ones turn 60. And with that, women are still more than 50% of the population and will be the largest group of older adults, and so we want to help women who are particularly vulnerable, especially those who don't own homes. Accountability for women and girls, Cities for CDA, the Convention on the Elimination of Discrimination Against Women, the Cities of Sacramento, Elgro and West Sacramento, with our support, signed resolutions, and we're going to be working with them to, and hopefully with you, to implement CDA provisions, which are a framework for supporting women and girls in governance. Connecting community resources, the big news there is that we've got this big project of building a digital resource hub. We want to ask anyone in the public who has experience with that, who wants to help, and that's going to take us a year or two to get that moving, but we just started. We've got our committee work well underway.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So Erin, before you leave the slide, and on, as to the last comment, this concept of a digital resource hub or center.
Yeah.
Is that something that is refined enough at this point, that you have a budget, you have kind of something to write about the intent and mission of what this
Yeah.
... hub would do?
Where we are is we have a concept paper. We have $8,000 in seed money from the state to build the first part of it, which is going to start with a kind of a general website, and then we're going to build it out. And then we're in kind of team planning, and we're going to then be doing listening sessions for, it's going to take us about four to six months to do the listening sessions around the county to find out what would be most useful. We have our ideas, but we want to hear from the community, so that's where we are. But we do need to raise money, and we have a concept paper ready to go for that.
I would love to have you share that with my office, because I'm very interested already. So it sounds like this is a digital platform.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, if you could follow up ASAP with us, that would be helpful.
Okay, we will do, gladly so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I think I need to go forward. So that's just a quick summary. You see some of the pictures of our activities there with the City of Sacramento. There we were with Habitat for Humanity, helping to build in the South area, and there were the entertainers at our Women's Festival. So the leadership team, which you've met some of them, and there's Rachel's picture, what we'd like to do, and we'd like to respectfully request a change to our bylaws, to incorporate in perpetuity a Chair Emerita, so that we can have continuity of leadership going forward and learnings. We understand from County Council that that might take a vote of the Board, and we're in conversation about that. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up that that is, the Commission has voted on this and has voted to recommend. That be correct? Chair, Wash.
I don't know, that might be very controversial, Erin.
Yeah.
Well, probably in the years hence it will be, but not today. Tizzy, yeah. So, and I feel slightly uncomfortable presenting that myself, but I think that in perpetuity, so many years from now, when none of us are around, it will behoove the Commission to have that kind of continuity as well as for today. Okay, any questions? So without further ado, we're going to get to the meat of our conversation today. I'd like to invite Shannon Williams, who just has been a terrific partner. I want to say that we've discovered that the, which you all, I'm sure, have already known, that the Institute for Social Research at Sacramento State is a treasure in this community, and that their commitment not only to data and data mining, but to how it serves the community and how to translate it into action and policy, bar none, I've been working myself in my personal, private life with other data folks around the state, and quite, they're just the Cadillac of data supporters, which is no easy task. So I'm really honored that Shannon's taking time, and Flor, who has done the work, that they've taken time to be here with us today, and to answer questions that we, non-data experts, will not be able to answer for you. Okay, so, next slide. I'm going to give it over to Shannon to talk about their methodology.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be here, and thank you for the glowing review. I appreciate that. So I'm going to go like this, because I need, so the Institute for Social Research has been working with the Women's Commission for a couple of years now, really identifying the data that's available to give a profile of the women in the county. I do, again, want to give a shout-out to Flor and Sebastian Camery, who really did the work behind this presentation. So a little background about what we did. So we worked with the Commission to identify the areas in which they would like to see the indicators of women and girls in the county, sort of indicators that align with their priorities. We collected almost 70 indicators and consolidated them into tables highlighting each of the interest areas, and we can make those available to you. Just a heads-up, it's just raw data at this point. This presentation is a snapshot of those indicators, and again, it was public data. It was data that we could pull from a number of different sources, and we really, obviously wanted to look at Sacramento County, and we wanted to see if the data was disaggregated by gender. And the data that we're presenting is the most available data that was available in January of this year. And did you want to do the demographic? Okay, all right. So I'm going to go kind of quickly through this, because I know you all have these data in front of you, as well as I know you're pretty familiar with the county. But just for overall, there's about 800,000 women and girls who live in Sacramento County. And as you can see in the age breakdown, and as Erin had mentioned, the population is aging, and so the percentage of the age 65 and plus is going to grow between now and 2030. We know we have a very diverse county. More than half of the women in the county are race or ethnicity other than white. 24% of the women and girls identify as Hispanic, and then we have the racial breakdown here of the other groups. We also know that almost 1 in 4 of all women and girls in Sacramento County are foreign-born. 23% of the women and girls living in the county were born outside of the U.S. The countries that our residents mostly were born in, were born outside of the United States, are the Mexico, Philippines, and Vietnam, and those are the top 10 countries. We wanted to look at households and how that relates to women and girls. And so if you look at female-headed households, a little over a half live alone. 25% live with an adult relative, and that could also be an adult child. 17% live with children under 18, and 6% live with non-relatives. Single women are more likely to be head of household with relatives or children compared to single males. I think we know that from our own experience. I think one of the things that we're continually kind of hitting up against is that we know that women are primarily the caregivers in the home, and not only with their young children, but also with elderly relatives. And 30% of California women provided care to family or friends in 2022 compared to about a quarter of men. So please feel free to stop me, I'm blazing through this. So here we have the average personal income for women with children in Sacramento County. It's around $46,000. So again, that's the average. We wanted to look at what that looks like for families. So for women with a child under the age of six, that average income is a little bit higher, $54,000. And then the average personal income for a woman with a child between the ages of six and 17, so with a young child, is $64,000.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, thank you, and I apologize for interrupting your flow here. I'm just curious, why, is there any significance to the under-six part and the first bullet point there? Is that, is there some?
There is, and thank you for lifting that up. I think we know under-six are children who are not in school, and so for working parents, they require childcare, if it's not a family, to be paid. And I think we have the numbers here for the cost of childcare in the county and the availability of that. So thank you for lifting that up.
Thank you.
And here we go. There is about one childcare space available to every four children of working families living in Sacramento County. So again, some of these families are using families and other informal arrangements, but in counting the total number of childcare spaces, it is woefully low. I think also the other point to lift up is the cost, again, for a licensed childcare in a center for an infant. It's $17,000, going back again to the average income being a little over $40,000. So it's pretty prohibitive for a lot of families in the county to afford to pay for licensed childcare. Preschool is a little bit lower, but it's still around $12,000 for a center, and family home centers are a little bit cheaper. I'm not sure where I should be. Here we're looking at the federal poverty level. And so I think a lot of you know that the federal poverty level is used in order that we can compare a level of income across the country. California has much higher living expenses, in particular, housing costs. And so just to keep that in mind, when we're talking about the federal poverty level, it is a very low number. So right now, 13% of women and girls in the county are living below the household poverty, are living in a household below the federal poverty line. But over to the right, we are comparing the federal poverty level to the estimated cost of living in Sacramento County. So someone who's living at the poverty level or under is making a little bit under $14,000 a year. But in calculating costs, meaning housing, transportation, healthcare, all of those things that you need to flourish in the county, it's about $45,000. Again, it's even higher if you have a child, and it goes up to 19, or sorry, $91,000. So now we're going to turn to economic and attainment gaps. I'm going to go back to my notes here. So I think when we look at college-going rates and educational attainment, I really think it's one of the brightest spots for women in the county, particularly for post-secondary education. Two out of three, or 67% of female high school graduates go on to college compared to 56% for male graduates. The graph to the right shows the breakdown of enrollment by gender, with local universities and colleges having a majority of female students.
So women are generally smarter.
I can't comment on that.
Okay.
So here we're looking at, at the comparison of wages. So, and while women make up more than half of those in the county with a post-secondary degree, women are still earning significantly less across all levels of educational attainment. The annual median income of a woman in Sacramento County is $6,800 below the median income for men. So the next slide looks at the top 10 employment sectors in Sacramento County, and the graph shows, it's, the graph, the graph is ranked by the percentage of total female workforce participation. So what we see here is that the healthcare sector is the largest employer of women in Sacramento County. 16% of women in the workforce is employed in the healthcare sector compared to 6% of the men, so looking at the top bar. Overall, women in Sacramento County are more likely to work in the sectors of healthcare, retail, professional, scientific, and technical services, public administration, and education. Healthcare and retail sectors together employ one in four women in the county. And in looking at the proportion of male to female employees, women are the most overrepresented in social assistance, healthcare, and educational service fields.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So it says public administration. There's no label for a bar here that is government, so to speak. So can we assume that public administration is all government in terms of the sector?
Yeah, we can double-check that for you, but I think it's all types of government.
Okay, great, thank you.
And these are really broad buckets, and just thanks for lifting that up. So the next slide compares this average wage of women and men employed in each of these 10 sectors. For example, even though women are overrepresented within the healthcare field, they still earn lower salaries than men employed in that sector. For example, women earn an average of about $78,000 per year compared to men who earn almost $98,000. And looking across all top 10 sectors, women on average earn $16,869 less than men in the county. Again, we do have some bright spots. Sacramento metro area is ranked 29th nationally out of 250 metro areas for wage equity between men and women. So there are some, there's some progress being made, and we're doing better than the state average overall, as you can see in that first column. Our strong ranking is due largely to gains made by women under 30, who on average earn slightly more than the average male. So as you can see here, women earn 101% of males under 30. But you can see as the age groups increase, that gap gets bigger. And just a quick snapshot, seems like a long time ago, but women, women were disproportionately impacted by job losses during the pandemic. If you go back to look at the sectors that they were employed in, particularly retail. But the good news is that women have returned to the workforce, and in 2022 actually have a lower unemployment rate than males. Now we're going to look at homelessness, and, oop, I'm churning too quickly here. So the latest point-in-time count that happened in January counted over 6,500 people as homeless, so homeless being not having a permanent place to live. And one of, in one in three of the people counted were women. And women experiencing homelessness, 57% were sheltered, and 43 were living outside, 43% were living outside. From the point-in-time count, we also know one in five people experiencing homelessness are age 55 or older. One of the things that we're talking with the commission about is understanding what sort of resources specifically are available for women. And so I think that a really important part of this exercise was understanding what data exists. And so now we're looking at what are those questions that we would like answered, that there aren't data out there to readily look at those questions. We're going to look at community safety, just looking at how women and girls are, their safety levels within the community. This slide is looking at middle school and high school reports of cyberbullying and also feelings of safety. So in the first graph to the left, looks at self-reported perceptions of safety in their school. And I think overall, girls feel less safe at school compared to their male counterparts. For example, in grade seven, 62% of boys report feeling safe at school compared to 56% of girls. I want you to note by grade nine, less than half of the girls in Sacramento County feel safe in their school. Similarly, more female students report experiencing being cyberbullied than male students, with the incidence of bullying being the highest in middle school. So the next slide has to do with domestic violence and the rates of calls to law enforcement for assistance. Note that this data is not available by gender, and the rate is by the entire population. So overall, the county's rate of calls to law enforcement for domestic violence assistance is lower than the state's. It's important to highlight that law enforcement data is a proxy used for domestic violence. We know that the majority of domestic violence incidences do not involve law enforcement. Further, the lower rates of calls to assistance may be a reflection of our residents' level of comfort in calling Sacramento County law enforcement for domestic violence situations. Further details about this data include over 5,000 calls for assistance in 2022, with nearly half reported that a weapon was involved. 65% of those calls reported strangulation, and the reason we report this is that it's been known in the data to be a red flag for intimate partner homicide. So here we're reporting out the violent crime rate. Again, the county is slightly higher than the state. I think we were, there was a gentleman talking about the chance of being a victim of crime. He may have been using different data statistics, but in the county, the likelihood that you're a victim of crime is one in 78, I'm sorry, one in 178, and in the state, it's one in 204. So we just looked at that. The right side talks about sex trafficking. There was a prevalence that was, study that was conducted that actually ISR was involved in, and we estimated that there were 13,000, over 13,000 people who are victims of sex trafficking over a five-year period. It's a, it's a pretty big number. We were all a little gobsmacked at the number, to be honest. I think it's important to note that this number is 11 times more than the folks that we know who touch either law enforcement or social services. So there's a lot of sex trafficking that's going on that does not come to the attention of any agency or service. And lastly, the last of the bleak slides, women are more like, are twice as more likely to be killed by someone they know compared to men. Men are more likely to die, or to be a victim of homicide, but two in three women know their assailant, and I think this ties back to the incidence of domestic violence and the critical nature of that. The next slide, did you want to talk about this? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. We also looked at political representation in the county, and as you may know, our city councils and boards and commissions are growing. Four out of seven city councils have a female majority, which is, I think, a first time for this area to have that many. Four out of seven city councils are now led by a female mayor, and we looked at all of the cities. So there's been a lot of progress in terms of female leadership. Women are significantly underrepresented, however, in county-elected positions. The team here looked at the SMUDD Board, the Recreation and Parks, Fire, Community, County Supervisors as well. So we have 32% of our county judges and district directors, and 51.5% of our county workforce is female. So these are just numbers to kind of give us a gauge, and we can keep looking at these as we go forward in terms of growth. Women are well represented in our school board seats. The school, nine of them have a female majority, and eight out of 14 school boards are led by a female president.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. If you go back now three or four slides, no, advance one, there you go. An important footnote you might think about adding here is that I believe some of these jurisdictions have rotational mayors.
Yes, it's true.
So depending on when you would, you know, document the percentage split, it could change year to year.
Change next year, yeah. Good point, thank you for that. Keep that in mind. With Cities for CDA, I think some of the jurisdictions are going to do an assessment of positions in city government as well as, well, mostly positions in their government as well. So I want to thank particularly Shannon Williams and Flor and the Institute of Social Research for this. I think just in terms of summation, some of this, these data might not be a surprise to you. Certainly, you all are, have supported domestic violence supports in this community at an extraordinary level. And so, but I think it's, some of this is good for us to keep track of and ponder, and we will be continuing to watch and monitor these data. We hope on our resource hub, we will have the ability to have these kind of data accessible to the public on an ongoing basis. So I wanted to open now for any questions with Sac State.
I'm not seeing any questions, and let me tell you why.
Okay.
That was extremely thorough. You probably got interrupted less than just about anybody that stands at that podium. So, and that's a good thing because, very impressive, the work that you do and the work that Erin, you've continued to do even before there was a commission. You know, it really, it's astounding, and it, you know, I'd say it blows my hair back, but that wouldn't be much of a compliment. But it really does show the commitment and the level of, you know, hard work that you put into this, and the work that you've done is really phenomenal. Thank you.
We really appreciate them. Thank you. Well, okay, so and thank you for your time. I'm going to then pass it for our closure to our new chair, Tamisa Wash. Thank you for all of your support and for your leadership.
Thank you. And Chair Kennedy, I think you said it all. No, it's really an honor to serve as the chair of the commission. Previously, I was the vice chair and served with Erin as the chair, and I will just say, Erin has supported an enormous grounding, her leadership and foundation has really just spearheaded like my excitement and my growth, and having her hopefully in our new role as a chair emerita as well, helping that continuity of being able to bring someone on in this, in this new role. I want to say also, the support of the board of supervisors has been invaluable. Every time we've come, whether it's to showcase our quilts, to ask support, I feel like the rallying of support is always here, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for that. Secondly, just, lastly, just really looking forward to serving with our commission and working alongside our new leadership team. There's a ton of excitement. The community has come out at our meetings to support our work, work priorities, as you all have seen there. And I think in the upcoming year, those priorities, we will be working on so intently that those are some of the things that we will hope to unfold and show, share the progress of that. So, and though in our, in the presentation, as you saw, there are, we are, women and girls are thriving, but there are also, we see there, there's still gaps and disparities. And so by having this commission and working on these priorities, we are hoping to lessen some of those disparities and to hear the voices of our community, our women and girls. And as it mentioned, we have our meeting tonight from 6:00 to 8:00, so I would love for anyone in the community to join us because we cannot do this work alone. And again, we thank you for your time today.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just one closing remark, my own. Just wanted to thank Erin and the board and everyone that's really, I think, exceeded the expectation of what we thought the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls could be when this board acted to establish it. And I think, as Erin will remember clearly, one of the just very honest remarks that you heard from a number of us during one-on-one meetings leading up to the establishment of the commission was the fact that we want to see you thrive and grow and do the great work that you're doing, but to, you know, be aggressive in terms of not relying on any, you know, county general fund increases and pursuing grants. And I think this is probably the third or fourth time you've come to us already with the great work you've done with grant funding. So So you are to be commended for that. There are other well-intentioned organizations that have some affiliation with the county that I think could learn something from you, even though you've, you've been in existence for a relatively short amount of time, in terms of being fiscally sustainable. So I wanted to not just congratulate you on the substance of what you're doing, but also how you're doing it. It's remarkable, so thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Not for this item.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Okay, for item 45, this is the Sheriff Activity League Presentation of Award. I need a motion to continue this to October 22nd.
Move to continue.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And for item 46, this is the Fire Safe Council Grant Update.
As Mary Jo's coming to the podium, I would say that if my board, fellow board members find it unusual that something like this is a hearing item and not in consent, because this is a bit of a no-brainer, it's because it's a requirement of the grant, I believe.
It is.
Thank you.
And you stole my thunder on my first line of the presentation. Well, good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Mary Jo Flynn-Evans, and I'm your Chief of Emergency Services. Our Fire Safe Coordinator would have loved to have been here. Unfortunately, there was an urgent matter that prevented her from coming this morning, so you're stuck with me today. There should be a brief video that we have for you on the Fire Safe Council program, if that's ready.
Living in an urban wildlife setting can be enjoyable. The trees and wildlife offer a unique setting not found in the cities. Unfortunately, residents also need to keep a wary eye for the threat of wildfires invading their neighborhood.
People have five, 12, a whole lot of acres, you know, so there's a lot of debris that has to accumulate.
Sacramento County is home to grasslands and habitats that can be susceptible to wildland urban interface fires. Fires like this went along Elverda Road in 2023 show how lands can be scorched and structures threatened if flames hit dry grass and trees. To reduce their fire risk, the town of Harold began forming a Fire Safe Council a year ago. Council President LaCharles James says educating residents about protecting themselves is the first step in reducing the fire threat.
Everybody comes out winter if they understand the elements involved of keeping us safe.
The county Office of Emergency Services brought in a Fire Safe Council Coordinator to assist the current councils with coordination efforts, grant funding, as well as developing mitigation projects. The coordinator also looks for opportunities to expand the Fire Safe Council program within other interested communities. Phyllis Banducci is a registered professional forester and works as a contractor for the county Parks Department on the Rancho Marietta Fire Safe Council project.
All we want to do here is make sure that we've created a condition that the fire can be put out quickly.
Rancho Marietta teamed up with the Parks Department to secure a $4.4 million CAL Fire Grant for its fuel mitigation reduction project. They are working to reduce the fire threat within Rancho Marietta, the Deer Creek Hills Preserve, and surrounding ranch lands by removing dangerous undergrowth. The project will remove potential fuels from 937 acres in and around the Rancho Marietta community.
It's not necessarily what's treated in the community, is that we create the stand structure around the community, so that hopefully we can get the fire stopped before it comes
And we have just a couple of quick slides for you, as soon as those are ready. Thank you. Well, while those are coming up, I'll share that the grants that we've received, so far, we've received two different grants through the California Fire Safe Council, starting in 2021, and that was just to bring together coordination of all the different Fire Safe councils and to grow Fire Safe councils in areas where we can expand their capacity. Some of that, we were going to work with collaboration with the Fire Safe councils, including identifying grant funding leads on their behalf, group formation, and then preparedness efforts. We also worked with them to begin developing some of their goals and objectives and project ideas moving forward. We found that there are three involved Fire Safe councils within Sacramento County, the American River Fire Safe Council, under the American River Parkway Foundation, the Harold Fire Prevention Council, and the Rancho Marietta Regional Fire Safe Council. Our coordinator attends their meetings. We also host roundtable meetings for all of the councils to join together, and we work primarily with the state Fire Safe Council in sharing some of the objectives and resource needs that these Fire Safe councils have. Our work plans for the state Fire Safe Council are comprehensive, and we've completed all of our work plan tasks to date. We have had 11 more tasks completed since the second round of grant funding was awarded in April of 2024. We've worked tirelessly to develop toolkits for the communities and utilize their, help them with their lack of funding. So we're utilizing grant funds to obtain basically display kits, tabling kits that are branded with canopies, tablecloths, and resources for them to utilize for their communities. And some of the next steps, we're continuing to look for additional grant funding. Our current round of grant funding expires at the end of this calendar year, and as we continue to seek grant funding, we'll be happy to work with the Fire Safe Council coordinators at each of those Fire Safe Council districts and to provide the materials that we do have on hand until those materials are exhausted. And with that, I'll invite any questions.
Any questions for the board? Superintendent Frost.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for all your support over time and everything you've done out in the southeast county.
Absolutely. Thank you for indulging me with this presentation in fulfillment of our grant.
And I think that appreciation goes in all five districts.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mary Jo. Next item, please.
Okay, so for item 47, this is the County Service Area Number 10 Benefit Zone Number Three Public Hearing to Establish a Service Charge Within the Oxform Subdivision and the Murphy Subdivision.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dawn Pimentel with County Engineering. The Oxform Subdivision, which is two parcels, is located on Oxform Lane, which is a private road east of Bradshaw Road. The Murphy Subdivision, which is one parcel, is located on the east side of Bradshaw Road, approximately 2,100 feet north of Gerber Road. To comply with the conditions of approval, the property owners of the subdivisions have requested the county establish the CSA 10 Zone 3 Service Charge for their developments. These charges provide extended transportation-related services that can reduce vehicle trips within their new urban growth areas. In response to the owners' requests, a notice and protest ballot was mailed to each property owner on August 9, 2024. This item proposes the levy of an annual service charge of $131.54 per single-family residential lot. The Oxform Subdivision is proposing 95 lots, and the Murphy Subdivision is proposing 170 lots. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend the board open the public hearing, consider the written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballots.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing seeing none, I will open the public hearing. This time, is there anyone in the public that would like to address the board on this item?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Will the clerk please tabulate the returned protest ballots?
I received two ballots. The first ballot is for the annual service, service charge to be levied on the Oxform Subdivision. The legal owner is KLLB-2 LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, for parcel number 066-0110-006-0000 and 025. And this site address is Oxform Lane, Sacramento, California 95828, and they are in favor. And I will open the second ballot. And this is for the annual service charge to be levied on the Murphy Subdivision. Legal owner is KLLB-2 LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, parcel number 06601000240000. And this is east of Bradshaw Road in Sacramento, California, and they are in favor.
Okay, seeing that there are no opposition ballots, please read into the record.
For both resolutions, they will similarly read as, in Section 2, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board received three protest ballots totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition to the service charge.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item.
For item 48, this is the Community Services Agency Biennial Report Regarding Development Review Process Improvements.
Good morning, Chair of the Board, members of the board. Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Executive of Community Services. I feel like I only get up here once every six months, so very happy to be back to talk about this item and what we've done to improve our land development processes over the last six months and where we're headed. So as I've discussed before, I believe that the naming, the nomenclature of this effort is a bit of a misnomer. We call the Development Review Process Improvement Initiative, but that's somewhat incomplete, because this is as much about culture as it is about improving our processes. You know, we want the county to be a great place to work. We want staff to feel valued and empowered to make decisions, and we also want to be known by our constituents, by our customers, by our partners, as a trusted partner that will help guide them through our processes with care and kindness and with an eye toward creativity and problem-solving, and I'm seeing a lot of that from our staff right now. And our goal is very straightforward. It's to be the best place to build in the region, and that's what we work towards every day. So with both our process and culture change in mind, you know, how do we know that we're succeeding? And there's really a few things I wanted to offer. This was a question that came from staff not long ago, and I've been thinking about it quite a bit. So first, one marker is customer surveys. So much like we did last year, we again did a customer survey just a few weeks ago. We got a very good response, upwards of 200 respondents from people that have done business with the county over the last year. We're still compiling all that information, and we're going to be getting it to you in fairly short order, but a lot of really good feedback from our customers by way of that survey. The second is through Acela, and as we've talked before, Acela is our software system of record. Frankly, it doesn't work the way it should, and we are investing a lot of time and effort right now into modifying Acela and modifying the way we use Acela to be a better tool for us, to offer better insight to our customers, and ultimately get us a lot better real-time data as to how we're doing processing applications. You're going to hear more about that today. And then finally, this is a bit anecdotal, but what I shared with staff. When I started this job a couple years ago, I got a lot of calls and emails from developers, builders, et cetera, asking me to weigh in on what I would say are relatively minor project-related issues. Those calls have fallen off a cliff. I really rarely get phone calls and emails from outside entities that are sort of what, again, I would characterize as minor issues. And what I attribute that to is staff are making decisions at the appropriate levels. They're being creative, they're taking some level of risk. Now, there's always going to be project-related issues, right? I'm under no illusion that the calls and emails will cease, but what I've told my department heads is when things bubble up to me, they should be really nasty. They should be the tough, tough issues that we just haven't been able to solve, and I'm more than happy to help weigh in on those. But again, those minor issues have just really fallen off the cliff, and I've talked to some of your chiefs of staff as well, and that's consistent with feedback I've gotten from them. Again, under no illusions, those calls and emails will cease. Development's tough, right? And we're working on zoning code changes and other things that are the source of some of those issues, but I think we're doing a tremendous job. So with that, I'd like to really thank staff for their incredible work. I'd also like to thank our development partners. A lot of this takes time to solve sort of systemic issues and deal with code and policy changes, et cetera, to make sure we're clearing the way for good development moving forward, and that takes staff away from their day-to-day job. It also takes our development partners, who are investing their time away from billable hours to, you know, whatever they're working on. So I appreciate everybody's help with this. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Todd Smith.
Dave, are all of our partners appreciative of the fact that we're cutting down on billable hours?
I don't want to speak for them, but I believe a couple are in the office, so they're in the chambers. We'll see.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Chair Kennedy, Board of Supervisors. I, I'm going to skip over this slide, but it's just generally a snapshot of where we're at, what's been done, what's pending, what's in process, and the remainder of what's ongoing and continuous. The numbers are pretty self-explanatory there. I'm here today to talk about something that is relatively simple, shelf-ready ADUs. Really, the goal when we set out to do this through a LEAP grant was to develop these ADU plans, building plans, in order to facilitate construction of more housing options at an affordable price point in a relatively short amount of time. So more housing, more quickly, and this last one, for less, I think could be rephrased, more money in your pocket. So pretty straightforward ideas here. We have made these available in June of this year. We went through this through a LEAP grant, as I mentioned earlier. We've got four different models available, ranging from 460 square feet. We've got two options at that level. We've got all the way up to 1,184 square feet. Those are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, so we got a range of options here for the public to use. And it's a relatively simple process through the Building Permits and Inspection Division. Each one of these plan sets has been, gone through the design review process, gone through full building plan review, so that's structural, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and it meets, all four of them meet the current California Building Code requirements. So real quickly, I'm just gonna, oh, the last thing I want to mention, there is an option for online submittal through the Acela Citizen Access Portal. And just real quick, I'm going to show you what these look like. So this is the first one, the second one, these are two studio units or one-bedroom. We're looking at all of these saving time of four to five months between plan review and then the cost of hiring an architect, and then the staff costs of reviewing plans, et cetera. The last one is coming up here, the Magnolia, this is the three-bedroom option.
Excuse me, Todd.
Yes.
Superintendent.
Thank you. Todd, how customizable are these off-the-shelf plans? I mean, first of all, I think it's a great idea to have the, to implement the concept of having these kind of ready-made plans so that folks can save time and money. But like we know with mass-produced housing and having come from that in a previous life, I know full well that you have a lot of variety in terms of elevations, color palettes, reverse, or flipping the floor plans. Of course, every lot is going to be different, every circumstance is going to be different. So can you speak just briefly to kind of how you can kind of customize from the palette of potential ADUs?
Yes, good question, and it's one that I expect we'll get a lot of from the customers in Sacramento County. So I mentioned each one of these has gone through the building for structural engineering, electrical, et cetera. Those aspects of each one of these are really fairly well-set. There are some options within each one to make, for example, in the, I think it's the studio, you can either go a studio or a one-bedroom. There are options to include an interior wall or not, so they're already pre-checked for some of that. On the exterior, the materials are really up to the customer who wants to use them. We're not saying they have to be a certain color. We're not saying they have to be a certain color, a certain, you know, trim type or paint scheme, for that matter. We really want them to blend in with the existing home on the property. So there are some customizable options.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So more information here. I just want to put a plug in for our building inspectors. John Derbro did a piece, thanks to our Public Information Officer, on KCRA. Early in July, we put some information out in the county news update on this. And we have also been making these little cards available for our walk-in folks at the Downtown Building Assistance Center. Really straightforward, just a QR code that takes you right to the building department page. And we've also been handing these out at community meetings. So we're seeing a lot of uptake of these plans, which is a positive thing for producing more housing in the county. And that's all I've got. And I'll turn it over to Matt on Water Resources.
Thank you. Matt Sato, Director of Water Resources. Todd, I love those. The only thing I'd say is there's a lot of green lawn in those, and we're going to be looking for water conservation. So we might have to modify those pretty drawings a little bit. But, you know, I'm going to piggyback on one thing that Dave DeFonte just mentioned, and that is that, you know, we've done a number of process improvements, but also, you know, it really comes down to the culture change. And for us, the culture change is really asking our customers, what are the barriers that are holding you back from bringing housing to the market faster, more efficiently, more cost-effectively? And so from that, we had a few things. I'll give you a few examples. One of them had to do with the action of board took a few months ago in changing the water code to cap our development fees collected at plan approval to $200,000. Now, that is a pretty big savings because when you think about 1,000-home development, the water connection fees on that, at least in Zone 40, would be somewhere in the range of $22, $23 million. And so 15% of that, you're in the upwards of $3 million. So if we're collecting that $3 million at plan approval, you may not have houses built and sold for another year, two years after that. And you can do the math on the carrying costs. And just per year, at a 7% carrying cost, that's $210,000 a year that's going to that carrying cost, which is then passed on to the home buyers. So again, it's a barrier financially for builders to carry that cost. And it's a barrier for homeowners as that cost is passed on, and it's raising the cost of homes in Sacramento County. So that was a pretty good improvement. The second thing, again, follows along that same theme, and that is that, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure that in the old way of doing things, we would say, okay, all this infrastructure is needed upfront when you build it, not really taking into account whether or not all that was really needed at that time. And that can be very costly. So just as an example, and we've done this on a number of things, where, you know, a tank and booster, that can run in the upwards of $6 million, actually even more than that, but $6 million for that upfront. And if that's truly not needed until a later phase in a project, let's say that's two years or five years down the road, you can think about the carrying cost of that. Oops, I went too far. The carrying cost on that, at 7%, again, is about $420,000 a year. And that one is actually not just a one-year thing. Typically, those phases come later down the road. The other advantage for us on that is an agency is that if we're putting infrastructure in the ground upfront on day one that may not even be used for three, four, or five years down the road, that infrastructure starts depreciating from day one. And so the lifecycle of that, of that infrastructure goes down. So for us, it's a win, making sure that we're putting infrastructure in when it's needed. And on the development side and customer side, it's a win as well for, again, bringing cost savings, removing those barriers, bringing housing to the market more efficiently. All right. With that, I'll pass it on to Matt Darrow from Transportation.
Good morning. My name's Matt Darrow. I'm the Chief of Planning and Programs for the Department of Transportation. And my division works with developers in the county regarding their transportation impacts. And one of the fundamental questions and issues that we've been dealing with over the last few years is that the construction of housing in our region isn't keeping up with demand, and affordability continues to decrease. So we asked ourselves, how can we do our part to make sure supply keeps up with demand? And the first thing we did was we went to our developers, and we talked to them. And they let us know that several hurdles exist in our process when they're required to deliver transportation projects when we condition them. And I want to go through that list really quickly. The first thing they tell us is that acquiring right-of-way for transportation projects from off-site or non-participating planned area landowners is an issue. They tell us it often proves to be a hurdle. It can work if those property owners are willing to engage and sell them right-of-way. But oftentimes, that's not the case. And when that happens, they get stuck. Many of the off-site transportation requirements that need to get built end up requiring eminent domain and only really a jurisdiction go through that process. The next thing they tell us is that dealing with outside entities can be a problem, such as the PUC when rail crossings exist, utilities when power lines need to be moved, or even Caltrans of the state when their state facilities are involved. Often, these agencies don't directly deal with developers, or they charge for their processes. And that just adds money to the process. The next thing that they tell us is that being required to deliver the projects in advance of building permit issuance induces too many timing-related risks and the unknown. And unknown oftentimes means unwillingness of lenders to invest in their projects. And without that funding, they really get stuck and have problems gaining the funding to move forward. And then finally, the last hurdle that they mentioned is that having the cost of the required improvements be more expensive than the fees generated by the development phase is a problem. And when that happens, they have no incentive to move forward. So given that feedback, the question that we asked ourselves is, how do we solve these problems? And in the last few years, my department's done a few things to solve those problems. You may recall that we have come to the board in the past. We've talked about developing a dynamic implementation tool to condition all new SBAs moving forward. We've also come to the board and talked about moving triggers. But today, I wanted to focus in on one additional solution that we've been able to implement in the last several months. And you may recall that earlier this year, we came to your board to establish seven on-call design consultant contracts. And those contracts have given our staff additional capacity, which has allowed us the ability to take on and deliver some of these transportation-related projects that we are requiring developers to do. And taking on some of these projects has really helped facilitate the continued development of housing in the county. And even though development is still paying for these projects, developers have told us that by doing this has helped them to continue to move forward. They tell us that by doing this, we're also removing some of the hurdles I mentioned earlier. So our department plans to keep doing this moving forward to facilitate that housing. And I'm going to finish my little part of the talk here with two slides that hopefully show some metrics that bring this home. So what I'm showing on the screen right now are approved agreements we've already brought to the board. The department has entered into contracts with developers to take on some of these projects. And by doing this, it allows a certain number of housing units to move forward in those planned areas. So in North Vineyard Station, for example, our department's taken on just over $11 million of transportation projects that we're progressing on right now. And that's going to allow that planned area to see another pathway cleared for 2,000-plus housing units to move forward. In the Floren Vineyard Community Plan, same story. We're going to take on just under $15 million of transportation projects and deliver those, which is going to allow just over 900 more housing units to move forward. And I also thought it would be a smart idea to tell you about the pending agreements we currently have not yet brought to the board, but that we're talking with housing developers about in these three planned areas. Cordova Hills-Braden, we are talking about taking on just under $9 million of transportation projects to deliver and clearing the path for the first 850 housing units out there. North Vineyard Station, another $2 million that we're taking on to deliver the pathway for another 200 housing units to move forward. And then finally, in the Floren Vineyard Community Plan, another $14 million of projects to take on for 475-plus. And that's the end of my portion of this. If there's no questions, I will go ahead and turn it over to Chelsea, and she's going to talk about some of the process or improvements that Community Services is working on.
I'm not doing that. We're doing it for you.
I need that. Thank you.
Dave, we're going to get the Development Review Process a baton.
All right. Good morning, Members of the Board. Chelsea Bowman, Development Coordinator for the Community Services Agency. I'm delighted to share an update today on an important process improvement initiative that we have undertaken this year. This particular effort was inspired by one of the recommendations in the 2022 Carriage Report, which suggested that we create a SWAT team of staff from each division to map out our existing development review processes, analyze them, looking for bottlenecks and inefficiencies, and then streamline the process wherever possible. So with that direction in mind, we formed the Process Pros. The Process Pros team shown here is comprised of subject matter experts from community development, water resources, and transportation. Individually, each member of the Process Pros has a deep understanding of development review from the perspective of their role in their division. And collectively, the expertise of all of the Process Pros combined gives us the full picture of the entire development review process from early planning and entitlements all the way through construction inspections and certificate of occupancy. So this team was curated to help the county achieve several objectives, including increasing the visibility and transparency of the entire development review process for both customers and for staff. Because the best and most fair development process will be the one that is predictable, consistent, and easy to understand. Another key objective is finding specific areas within the current process where we can streamline or reduce friction, make other efficiency improvements that will positively impact timelines and the overall development review experience for everyone. And we also hope to expand our own fields of vision as staff to see the bigger picture of the overall development process from our customers' point of view and to recognize and understand the efforts that come before and after our individual parts in the play. So to help guide us in this undertaking of documenting and analyzing our current development review processes, we've enlisted the facilitation expertise of ThinkDev, a local organizational development firm. I would like to take a quick moment to acknowledge the outstanding work and dedication of all of our Process Pros up there. They've already spent countless hours meeting, mapping, debating, categorizing, and that's all on top of their regular day-to-day responsibilities. And I think as staff, we recognize that we have a prime opportunity right now to make the changes that we wish to make and to change the things that, in our day-to-day experience, feel like they need a little bit of a tune-up. So for that, we'd like to extend our gratitude and thanks to our amazing leadership team for empowering us to do just that. It was evident to us in the February 2023 board resolution about the DRP that this board felt strongly that empowerment and risk-taking would be critical to carrying out our development goals as a county. And this Process Pros effort is just one exemplification of our leadership team taking that guidance to heart. So here we have a few behind-the-scenes action shots of some of our Process Pros gatherings where we're rolling up the sleeves and really getting into the process. I do believe we are single-handedly keeping 3Ms Post-it Division in business right now. So what does this all entail? What are we doing here? What does the process of process mapping, the development review process, look like? I think we need a process map. So we initially embarked on this journey in March of this year. The first step was to simply get everything that we know about the existing development review process out onto the table so that we could begin to take stock of the many different variables that are part of the development review equation here. So this initial inventory revealed, perhaps not surprisingly, the depth and complexity of our development processes. There were over 60 different sub-processes, dozens of different types of customers, and about 100 different touchpoints in the development review process where we're passing the baton on to the next department or picking it up from someone else. With all those pieces out on the table, we were then faced with the somewhat daunting question of how to best categorize everything. So this phase required the group to learn about different levels of process mapping and learning when to zoom in and capture the minute details, when to zoom all the way out and see the big picture. And this zooming back and forth was a bit more challenging than it seems like it might be. This phase also required the group to come up with some common nomenclature around development review terms, which was also surprisingly challenging. We found that even basic terms like project, applicant, approval meant different things to different groups depending on the sub-process or the context. So that was the spring, setting the foundation. Moving into summer, we spent most of the summer focusing primarily on getting the existing process down on paper in the most comprehensive and logical way possible. To do this, the Process Pros have become quite familiar with making decision trees and flow charts. They also had an opportunity to review their draft process maps with 150 of our development review peers at our most recent quarterly team meeting a few weeks ago. And that resulted in some very helpful feedback. That feedback is being incorporated by the Process Pros now into the process maps, and we expect to be in the home stretch of this phase very, very soon. So looking ahead a bit, the next order of business for the Process Pros through the end of this year will be analyzing those process maps and looking for areas where we can reduce friction and streamline certain elements of them. And similar to the report that Mr. Carriage prepared a few years ago, the Process Pros with support from our facilitator will be preparing our own kind of inward-looking version of that findings and recommendations report. So the final stop on this journey will be the presentation of these findings and recommendations. In early 2025, the team plans to present these findings to our development review peers, all 200 of them, our department heads, our deputy county executive, and will share and discuss plans for implementation at that point. And lastly, the Process Pros look forward to returning here early next year to share our final findings and recommendations with you. And then one additional process improvement initiative update that I'd like to provide today. So simultaneously with everything that the Process Pros are doing here, we have this secondary and somewhat overlapping process underway, which involves extensive updates to Acela, which you've already heard a bit about this morning. This is our permitting software, and we could not be making these improvements without our partners on the Acela team at DTEC. So the process mapping work that I just highlighted here will provide the foundation and the base frameworks for all of the Acela, or most of the Acela improvements that we need to make. So this Acela upgrade initiative really was launched in earnest by way of contract approval from this board in June of this year. This substantial investment has allowed our DTEC team to begin migrating our current Acela system to the cloud-based or SaaS version, which is going to unlock all sorts of technological advancements behind the scenes. And then for the rest of us, all of our customers and staff who use Acela, we can expect to see a bunch of enhancements. I'll highlight a few of them here. The first is increased visibility and transparency. So things like customer-facing portals with much better views into the current status of plan review for any particular permit or project. We have a running joke in the Process Pros that if you can track a pizza, you should be able to track a permit. We also would be able to have a permit info board, which would be an online dashboard where customers can see sort of the cumulative data of the average turnaround times, maybe over the past month, say, so that they can plan better when they submit their plans. And also perhaps the number of projects that are ahead of them in the queue, so that we're communicating those expectations with our customers. We also expect to see improved clarity and consistency of messaging. With the new version, many of the tasks that are currently manually performed by both staff and our customers will be able to be automated, which will result in a quicker, smoother, more consistent experience. We'll also be expanding our online payment center to allow electronic payments for virtually all development activities, so our customers can put that checkbook back on the shelf to collect dust. Our new system will also bring with it upgraded metrics and reporting functionality. So the world of data visualization has improved drastically over the past decade or so. So we can expect to see big improvements here in our ability to analyze permit data, identify trends, forecast permit activity, track performance, and also meet our mandated reporting requirements much more easily than we are able to now. And lastly, we generally expect to have this better all-around cohesion and efficiency as we rebuild Acela as the true system of record it's intended to be. So to the extent possible, we'll be consolidating all development-related processes into Acela, eliminating shadow systems and the sidebar processes that currently do not tie into the system of record. So this is expected to significantly improve the So this is expected to significantly improve the continuity of the county's development process and aid in breaking down some of those silos. So I could go on and on, previewing all the forthcoming features in Acela and kind of geeking out over them, but I will leave it here for today. As for timing, we do have some distance yet to travel before most of these improvements will be ready to go live, but as we get closer, we'll be sure to share all updates, tutorials, and any other necessary resources to ensure staff and customers are informed and prepared for the county's new and improved Acela. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dave.
Supervisor Serna, you're very difficult to interrupt, by the way.
Thank you, and I'm glad David is coming back to the podium, because I think this is probably more an appropriate question for him. So first of all, Dave, this is the platform, the Acela platform, where, back under the capable chairmanship of Mr. Desmond, we had the community meeting out in his district, and I believe that's when you said publicly that this system isn't being used or isn't even, you know, well-acknowledged by a good number of staff in community development? Is that, is this...
So it is very much being used. The analogy that was provided to me, and I'm going to butcher right now, is essentially that we bought the Mercedes and we're driving a Civic. No offense to Civics, I have a Mazda myself. But, you know, and I was here when we originally launched this in the early 2000s, and frankly, and no offense to the folks that put in a lot of work at the time, but in my eyes, it really just wasn't properly set up from the get-go to take advantage of the power of the system it had back then, let alone the power that the system currently has. And what we're talking about is really tapping into that and unleashing it. So it very much is the system of record, but we're only using a portion of what we can be.
So I assume this isn't in the marketplace for such platforms. I assume that this, they don't hold a monopoly, this is, there's other platforms. So once you came to the conclusion that we were not maximizing the utility of what it has to offer, was there any decision point where you even thought about switching platforms, or was that cost prohibitive? Would that just take more time and energy to re-educate everyone that would assume to be using it? I'm just curious where the fork in the road perhaps lied in the past, where you said we're all in on Acela, we don't want to necessarily go in a different direction.
Great question. So that fork in the road was really earlier this calendar year, and we did absolutely explore other product offerings, and there are some others out there. I would say the majority of especially larger jurisdictions do use Acela, but we did look at every other offering out there, especially when we started looking at migrating to the cloud, which is really necessary because Acela is sunsetting their on-premises version. So if we were to keep with that, where we own the software and it lives on servers in the county, it would no longer be supported come next year, and that brings all sorts of security issues and other things to bear. So we did do a deep dive in what else is out there, and we came to the conclusion that it really makes sense to stick with Acela. I was willing to pull the plug and move on if there was other benefits, albeit that is a very time-consuming process to migrate, but we were willing to do it. It just made the most sense to stick with Acela, given what we knew about the other product offerings.
And do we have a long-term subscription then with Acela?
We do. DTEC did a fantastic job, frankly, negotiating with Acela and bringing the costs down substantially from what they had originally proposed. It is a multi-year agreement, it is a seven-year agreement by the count of Chelsea's fingers.
Okay, and then we're how far into the seven years?
Six months.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll follow up with a few of these questions on Acela, Dave, and then have a few other questions for you. So, and you know, I'm usually looking at things through the infill lens, of course, and you know, I've had several conversations, as I've had with many members of your team, about the common and recurring concerns about kind of just this, the lack of, say, a small infill developer, for instance, right? The lack of kind of transparency, lack of knowledge about what's going on, the delay, the inconsistency, maybe the duplication. Those are all things that Acela is intended to improve upon, is that correct?
It is part of the equation, for sure, but as you'll recall, we had a couple workshops back in the spring, really talking about zoning code and other code changes to spur infill development and other development generally. So Acela is part of the equation, but we're working on a whole host of other things, and frankly, that's one of the things I wanted to leave you with, some of my parting thoughts. It is really hard to choose what to highlight here at these six-month check-ins. Attached to your staff report is the master list of all the things we're working on, and actually, just earlier this morning on your consent calendar, items 14 and 25, we have new standard construction specs with CMID and revised improvement standards from DWR. Those are the result of almost two years of working with the BIA and other partners to polish up our standards, to make sure that they're working appropriately for everybody involved. That's not really the sexiest stuff to highlight in this kind of venue, but that is incredibly important that we put in that work to polish those things up.
I appreciate you mentioning that, too, in terms of, but in terms of Acela, and I understand there are so many things we're doing, you can't, we couldn't have a quarterly report and spend two days, the chair would be very upset by that. But I do think it is important for the public certainly to hear some of these things, but in terms of the Acela, and I understand all the other things we're doing in terms of making changes to, you know, zoning changes and other process changes, but just internally in terms of the review process at the county, given the existent, you know, ordinances and zoning we're working with, Acela should be a dramatic improvement of the things we're doing.
Absolutely. The way that we're changing the use of Acela is going to definitely improve coordination amongst the different entities within the county, because when those batons are passed off, sometimes it's done so manually, right? And doing it all through Acela, we can track it through Acela, we can see in real time who's holding the ball, what the next step is, and just as important, our customers can, too. And the stupid pizza analogy that was referenced earlier is my analogy, where, you know, if you order a certain brand of pizza on an app on your phone, which I do on occasion, you can see a little bar across the screen that says, "Your pizza, your order's been received, your pizza's being made, it's in the oven, it's being packaged, it's out for delivery." It's a level of insight into where your order is. Acela's going to now provide that to our customers. We get inundated with phone calls and emails from customers just asking where they're at in the process, what's the next step, and we think this will be a dual benefit for our customers to have that view into the system, but also a benefit to us in the hopes that those calls and emails will be cut down.
That's great, Dave, thank you. And so just a couple other points and maybe a couple of questions. So I just finished a series of community meetings on land use and economic development in the unincorporated areas, and want to thank Todd and Crystal for attending each of these, and, you know, I think, Todd, they both heard a lot from constituents in the unincorporated area, on the one hand, you know, there's a little bit of tension there, because on the one hand, they want to see more investment, more housing, more businesses relocated there, but knowing that these are in communities that were built at a much different time, with infrastructure that is much different, with, you know, single-family zoning with backyards where you kind of have an expectation to continue to have a little bit of space between you and the backyard of your neighbor, they want to maintain some of that while at the same time supporting, you know, ADU plans, and a lot of discussions came up about this. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge that, acknowledge this built environment that we have, that, you know, a couple hundred thousand people at least in the unincorporated area probably live in a single-family home, I would imagine, and to assure people that, hey, we understand that, we understand some of the changes are really going to change that dynamic, kind of the landscape that people live in, and try to identify ways to mitigate it. And so I just appreciate Todd, because it came up a lot about some of the requirements with ADUs, and I love what we've done with these pre-approved plans, I think that's amazing. But with some of the very, very narrow setbacks, especially in backyards, what can we do to try to, you know, mitigate that or shield it a little bit when some of these denser areas butt up against a little larger yard? And I think that's, it may seem like a small thing, but it's extremely important to people in their neighborhoods. So I think it's important to acknowledge it and try to mitigate it where it happens. The other thing is, Dave, and I wonder, I know you didn't want to mention everything, but what's the status of the infill project coordinator? Because I think that is obviously of particular importance.
I was just going to mention that. We are interviewing now, I don't know exactly where we're at, but I think within the next few weeks, two weeks, second round right now, and my understanding is we got a great crop of folks, and what that infill coordinator will be focused on is identifying specific barriers to infill development and being charged with knocking down those barriers. So less of what planning already does really well, which is, you know, establishing the longer-term vision and putting plans in place to implement it. What we're talking about is having this person focus on very specific barriers. You know, we've talked about certain commercial corridors having sewer deficiency or whatever it is. We know it, what are we going to do about it, right? And actually putting plans in place to make sure we're knocking down those barriers.
Great, and I think one of those, I think that, I could see that person becoming very quickly overwhelmed with a lot of things that...
We will have to target their efforts, and we have 14 corridors, if not more, that we've been talking about for a long time. We can't do all the things at once, so prioritizing very specific areas is going to be a key part of the discussion moving forward.
And I think one other thing, I know, and I talk to DOT folks mostly about this, is that a big part of that is going to be increasing, I think, our effectiveness and advocacy at SECOG, for instance, to draw down state and federal dollars in support of some of these infill development efforts, because, you know, I know it's been frustrating to a lot of us up here when I'll go to a very small jurisdiction in SECOG, for instance, and they'll be getting a lot of money for a little tiny project, where I look at unincorporated Sacramento County where the need is dramatically greater, and sometimes we're not getting the resources to meet that need. So I think that's going to be an important component of not only the infill coordinator, but a continued priority for the county. Thank you, Dave.
Welcome to Live Oak. Supervisor Serna.
Actually, I'm going to save my question for a later related item, I think it's more appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just say, first of all, that I'm blown away. This is exactly what, you know, I envisioned when we started having these conversations. You know, your opening comments about, you know, your phone calls falling off the cliff, I think we can all share that sentiment. You're absolutely right, you hit it on the nose. We're still going to get calls on projects and so forth, that's just the nature of the business, but we're not getting the calls we shouldn't be getting, and that means customer satisfaction, which is what this is all about, and building better communities. So I still do get calls from developers regularly asking where Dave's pizza is, but I'm glad that Acela's going to solve that problem. But overall, this has just been, you know, if I expressed truly how I feel about it, I would show what a nerd I am on this stuff, but I do appreciate you and all of those of you out there and those listening, you know, at your desks getting work done. I sincerely appreciate the work that's being done. We're really, really making Sacramento a place where people want to do business. Thank you.
And I really appreciate that. Really, just a couple of final thoughts from me. Again, I wanted to express my thanks to staff and our development partners. You know, we talk a lot about, as of two years ago, just dropping a whole new workload on everybody's desks when they're already suffering from vacancies and just record amounts of work, but the way, what I reiterate time and time again is this is an investment in the future, and it's not going to pay off immediately, and there's going to be short-term pain. Every hour staff spends on what you heard today is an hour they're not working on an application. So it comes at a cost, but it's an investment, and it's going to pay off, so I think it's well worth our time to do just that. Second, I wanted to mention what Chelsea had talked about with Acela. By the way, this was Chelsea's first presentation, and as always, I have high expectations, and she exceeds them. You know, Acela, to me, is the top priority for the next year, bar none. And again, this isn't maybe as interesting to most, but it is absolutely foundational to everything that we do related to development. Getting Acela right is going to pay off for the next 20 years, and we look back at 20 years ago and how we launched it, you know, there's been complaints since then. I don't want the future us, 20 years from now, to be looking back at us saying, why didn't you do something about it? We are going to do something about it right now. Third, I just really wanted to express my appreciation to the board. You have been absolutely lockstep on this, which is so tremendously helpful for me and staff, knowing very clearly by way of the resolution and your continued support where you want us to head. So that's just incredibly helpful. And then finally, either today or by way of discussions in the future, if you have any ideas for where you want us to focus, if you're seeing deficiencies, any feedback you have, we're all ears and happy to chat through that with you. So with that, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I do want to offer my thanks to everyone that has made this a pretty remarkable success already, but I think there's still some work ahead. A couple of things. Number one, I would like to see that at some point, and maybe this is occurring already, and I just don't know about it, but one of the metrics that I'd be very interested in understanding is how do we rate compared to other local jurisdictions at the end of the day in terms of the time and cost of development review and approvals? And then number two, I am hopeful, and I know Mr. Villanueva is in the queue to offer his remarks, that we take credit for what we're doing publicly, not just here, but we're getting very used to the news stories that come out about, you know, the culture change and how we're doing business differently here in Sacramento County, but this should be at the forefront in my estimation about what this initiative really means, and quite frankly, we need to publicly highlight that for others besides the development community. I think, you know, those that are interested in trying to collectively address the housing shortage need to understand precisely what we're doing. So, you know, I suspect that he's, David's going to tell us in a minute that that's already in process, but it is definitely something that I believe strongly that the general public, our constituents, need to understand, and we need to, you know, again, broadcast that.
And I completely agree with that, and the PIO has been great. Kim Navas has been a huge partner for us. I'll say about six months ago, I snapped, as my staff will attest to, when I saw something in the Business Journal from another jurisdiction, being highlighted for something we do routinely all the time, and I lost it a little bit, and that's what kicked off a renewed effort to push out more information about the good work that we're doing. I don't think we get the credit we deserve, and we're working on getting as much messaging out along those lines as possible.
Great, thank you.
And we want you to occasionally lose it, Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Supervisor, thank you, Supervisor Serna. I just want to continue on that theme. We are looking at it, like Dave said, about getting that messaging out, and Kim and the PIOs are doing a fantastic job getting that information out, not only about being a fantastic place to build or invest in Sacramento County, but also as a fantastic place to work, and so we can draw in those planners, we can draw, there's so many different types of services that the county offers, and hearing about the great work that Dave's doing with his team is fantastic and great to highlight. I did want to also kind of build on what Dave was saying earlier about thanking the board. I can't think of a board agenda item that, not a board agenda that's come forward where there isn't an item on this development review process improvement, and the board continues to support the effort, continues to support and approve those agendas items, and knowing that we're taking a bit of a risk on some of those items, but it's a very calculated risk. I think Dave said this many times, we will make mistakes, but we'll learn from those mistakes and continue to do the best, and I know the board believes that we are doing, and we have good intent in mind, and we're continuing to bring that forward, so thank you for that, and also thank you for your investments during your, the budget actions. The last thing I want to just touch on is, you know, Deputy County Executive Dave DeFonte is tireless in this effort to do this. I also go out and meet with various developers and attorneys and friends of the development community, and that's usually the first question I ask, is how are we doing on this development review process? And all of them are ecstatic about the changes that have been happening, including under the leadership of Mr. DeFonte. So I want to thank Dave, and I want to thank his team, they're doing a fantastic job, there's still so much more to do. The Acela, speaking of geeking out, the Acela thing is very exciting for me to sit there and do that. You know, if you automate a bad process, you just have a bad automated process, and I think they're taking a step back and really looking at it, and really looking at how to change, and the pizza comment was fantastic, I loved that idea, Dave's been talking about that for quite some time, and he does get a little upset when people outshine him in the media and is immediate to react to that, and we have our, also have our reaction to that. So, but thank you to the board, thank you to Dave, thank you for Dave's team, and everybody in here, and supported by him behind me, and, you know, changing the development review process and changing the culture of the way we do county business is key, and I... the way we do county business is key, and I appreciate that and his efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villanueva. Do we have public comment?
We do have public comment. Chris Norum.
Good afternoon, or morning, Board. Chris Norum, North State Building Industry Association. I just want to start off by, you know, applauding the board and the county for undertaking this. You know, the fact that we're even having this presentation says a lot. I mean, I can't remember the last time, in the last 10 years I've been doing this, where we actually had this kind of focus on this. So that's, it's fantastic. It's just a night and day difference between now and what it was five or 10 years ago. You know, the staff here and the board are making advances on both policy and projects. I mean, like, you had these items just this morning on consent on water. I mean, that's a perfect example. I spent five hours with Matt Satow and his team and all of our people, like, hammering through those regulations to the point where it was a non-issue when it got to you. And that's just, you know, one little microcosm of a lot of different areas. We have working groups on, I think, like, 10 different areas where we are digging in with our people and the staff in a collaborative way, not expecting everyone to agree with us all the time, but it takes, you know, a team effort to get us across the finish line, and that's happening. So I want to just applaud Dave and his team and everyone else. And, you know, Dave is leaving no stone unturned. You could look at that list and all the things that we're working on, and it's hard to actually keep up. So that's great. You know, I do want to just address one thing, you know, from a big picture, you know, we're all in the weeds and the details of how we're going to make those happen, but I think that we need to not lose sight of the fact that we're really trying to address a housing crisis. Together, we're trying to build thousands of houses for families so that children can have better, safer places to live and go to school and have parks and better futures. And that's really what this is all about. We're on the same team, and it's really great to have that collaboration with the county. I know that there's a lot of work still to do, but we look forward to it, and it's just been a great process. And I just want to, again, echo my earlier remarks. Thank you so much for all of your guys' direction, the latitude you're giving your staff, the ability to listen and be creative and to work with us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris, for your continued partnership. We appreciate it. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Chris, I just wanted to say thank you as well for being a great partner on behalf of our local building industry association. And as you're aware, 25 years ago, I had your job in the nine-county Bay Area. And at the time, that local BIA was doing some cutting-edge things, working with local jurisdictions in terms of school fee impact legislation, in fact, statewide. So I'm, the comment I want to make, or the suggestion I want to make, is I'm hopeful that this is being communicated from our local regional BIA back to the mothership at CBIA so that kind of the lessons learned and the successes that we might continue to enjoy here in Sacramento County get communicated back to the statewide association so other counties, other cities can understand that it's doable and maybe begin to take some insights about how we've adjusted and how we've managed to work with the BIA to jointly shift the culture. I think it's something, especially in light of not just a regional housing shortage, but a statewide housing shortage that others ought to be looking at as well.
Yeah. Thanks for that comment. And I have communicated some of that, and, you know, it's interesting, I don't bring this up all the time, but, you know, for example, like, what Matt has done on the capping water fees, which seems like this esoteric issue, it's a big deal. And it's something that we're actually working with in a number of other jurisdictions around the region, trying to get them to adopt that same policy. So in essence, you guys are leading the effort, and we're looking at you guys as an example of what to do and how we can make better policy here. I've made some suggestions of things we've done here to CBIA for legislation, and it hasn't happened yet because it's a giant job trying to control what's happening in the legislature. But I take your overall point, which is that you guys are now kind of at the forefront of trying to push how things can be done better, and it can be helped as an example in a lot of places. You know, I think Larry Gualco wanted to say something, but he didn't register to talk, but I think you guys probably want to hear what he has to say.
I forgot to register to talk. Can I say a few words?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Good morning. Larry Gualco with One of Our Homes. We are one of the larger builders in town. We're currently developing over 2,000 home sites in Sacramento County in various stages and probably close about 700 homes within the boundaries of Sacramento County this year. I want to thank the board for the direction and the county exec for continuing this process. I agree with all who have said Dave has worked tirelessly, Dave DeFonte. And this has been a great process. It's made a lot of progress. And Dave is exactly right, as Supervisor Serna and others who have said it's not just a process change, it's a culture change, and it has occurred. In working with transportation, I would like to say that Matt Darrow and Matt Seto nailed it on the head when they talked of planning for infrastructure, particularly expensive infrastructure, rather than requiring it from the outset. We've worked with DOT under Ron Vaccar's leadership, Matt and Cameron and all, put together, I think, four roadway implementation agreements to date out in North Vineyard Station and Gap area, which laid out funding, timing, and everything so that it could be done in an orderly manner. In addition to Dave and Ron and all that I've mentioned so far, Claudia Troy, the others, all been very helpful. So there is, there is ways to go on certain things, Acela at all, but there has been a lot of progress, and I just want to thank everybody, everybody here today. You should all feel really good about what's occurred to date, and I look forward to working with them in the future as we, as we continue to improve SAC County. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Gualco. That's all our public comments?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Next item.
Okay, for item 49, this is the SAC Town Liquor PCN, a letter of public convenience or necessity for a property located at 9203 Folsom Boulevard, at the intersection of Folsom Boulevard and La Riviera Drive in the Cordova Community.
Good morning again, Chair Kennedy, Board of Supervisors. I am not Kimber Gutierrez. As the slide says, I am still Todd Smith, your planning director, here presenting the SAC Town Liquor PCN project for Kimber, who is out today. Just real briefly, the location of this is at the intersection of Folsom Boulevard and La Riviera, the northeast corner. It's in the Cordova Community, and the request before you is a letter of public convenience or necessity for a type 21. That's an off-sale general liquor license for a new liquor store. Type 21 is beer, wine, and spirits. The context of this request is the existing zoning is designated Shopping Center, SC, and so it's not uncommon to see alcohol outlets in SC zone property. The surrounding land uses, we have retail commercial to the north and east and west, and to the south, we have obviously Folsom Boulevard, the railroad, and Highway 50. This exhibit is fairly common in all of these PCN requests. This is the one-mile radius map that shows at the center of the circle in the middle is the proposed site for SAC Town Liquor, and then the red lines showing the different census tracts within the one-mile radius. And so the, it's a bit hard to see on the screen, but the green boxes show the existing type 21 outlets for alcohol in, within the one-mile radius. Obviously, there's multiple census tracts included here. We also show on this slide the vacant parcels in that pastel salmon color, and then the lighter blue, the schools within that one-mile radius, as well as daycare centers. Those are the squares, the dark-colored squares. I will note, actually, this is in a later slide, I think, but a nuance of our county code and the ABC licensing process is the concentration calculation is based on the census tract as opposed to what's in this one-mile buffer. So you see a lot of alcohol outlets to the south, to the west, and a few to the north. Those are all in different census tracts. And so when we talk about overconcentration, we're talking about that census tract 91.06, which is where this requested PCN is located. When this project went to the CPAC, Cordova CPAC met in July, they voted to recommend approval of the board, to the board, excuse me. There were a number of questions that came out during that CPAC meeting. They had questions about conditioning the type 21, which we responded, and we've said this to the board as well. ABC at the state level is the one who conditions PCNs. At the local level, we do not have authority to add conditions on alcohol licenses. They had questions about security cameras, where those would be located. You can see an exhibit of that in Attachment 4 of your package. They had some questions about the management experience of the applicant, the status of the business, why the location was chosen, and the applicant can speak to those issues or questions, rather. There were three public comments at the CPAC. Two were against the proposal, highlighting concerns about other liquor stores in the neighborhood, as you saw on the exhibit just before this, those existing convenience stores, those services that already exist. They also expressed some concerns about a nearby place of worship that is just east of the proposed liquor store. There was one public comment who was in support of the applicant stating the applicant's good character, and that individual also provided their perspective that the current site is vacant and filling the site would be better than keeping it vacant. By way of project analysis, this is the reason we're coming for the letter of public convenience and necessity. So the property is identified as being in a high-crime district, which is District 7, Subarea Folsom Estates. The crime rate exceeds the 20%, excuse me, let me rephrase that. The crime rate exceeds the 20% of the average, and that's the only reason for the PCN request. There is not a current overconcentration right now within the census tract. The baseline assumption, or the baseline allowance, excuse me, is one, or excuse me, two, there is an existing one alcohol outlet in this area, the census tract. So the granting of the type 21 would not overconcentrate the census tract, but again, the reason for the PCN request is because of the high-crime district. The property is within one mile of several sensitive uses, as you saw on that exhibit. Staff's analysis is that the property is buffered by some of the geographical features. I mentioned Highway 50 to the south and east, the American River to the north, as well as the major roadways in the area. The site is not located in any of the four Sacramento County Environmental Justice Communities, so we didn't bring those policies into play here. Staff recommendation here is for approval. The applicant has demonstrated that the proposed sale of alcohol can be accomplished in a manner that sufficiently addresses or eliminates objections received and the negative impacts identified, and this review is all spelled out in Sacramento County Code. We believe that applicants have demonstrated that the public convenience or necessity of the liquor license outweighs the objections and negative impacts identified. I would note their justification, as stated in the application materials, is that they would be providing us a selection of specialty wines, craft beer, artisan spirits that addresses the unmet needs of customers in that local area. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Todd. Appreciate it. Appreciate our conversation about this yesterday as well. So I just want to be clear on this. I think any reasonable person could look at this map and come to the conclusion that it sure looks like a concentration, but I understand, just want to clarify, that obviously the definition you, or the standard that you were going by is just looking at that one census tract demarcated by that red line. According to that, it's not an overconcentration, right?
That is correct.
So we'll leave it to the state to come up with a standard that is completely counterintuitive to what I'm seeing on this map here in front of me. So but for, but for the sheriff's concern, this wouldn't even have been coming to us for a PCN discussion. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. The sheriff, and I think this is an attachment in the board letter as well, the sheriff's condition letter is Attachment 5. They have protested the issuance of the PCN letter unless a number of conditions are imposed. And as I mentioned, the board, under ABC regulations, does not have the local authority to impose those conditions on the alcohol license.
And I'm glad you brought that up. That was my other question. So I think I always get this screwed up, Todd, is those conditions, this would be a brand-new license.
Correct.
Would ABC enforce those conditions?
Our understanding is that they don't actively enforce, in terms of the way that we would normally, at a local level, perhaps routinely monitor and enforce problem locations. I think they are more reactive. For example, if issues come to light as part of community complaints, they might reach out and figure out an enforcement mechanism. But as a matter of routine, my understanding is no, they don't.
And would we be in a position, the county be in a position to enforce those conditions?
We would not, because they are, if ABC chose to impose those conditions, they have the statutory authority to do something about them. We do not.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Okay, would the applicant like to present to the board at this time? It's not mandatory, if you'd like to. Okay.
Hello, Board. My name is Parvita Sodra. I'm the applicant. I didn't know I was going to speak today, but I just want to say that I've been trying to get this pursuit for the past nine months. I've been paying rent in this building for nine months, past nine months. I'm really trying to get it passed, my first business, my first leap into business. I'm currently a SAC Day student, it's my senior year. I chose this location just because it was close to my school, so I could go back and forth and kind of run the business and still be in school. I don't have really anything much to say, but hopefully it gets passed.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? It's very impressive. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We do have public comments. Anil Khan.
Top of the morning, guys. I work at La Riviera Market for the last 15 years. I've seen the community go from being really rough to making it such a better location. I even fought my bosses to change the name of the store from La Riviera Liquor to La Riviera Market so we can sponsor the local College Glen Little League team. There are, from the point that I saw on the map with the dot in the middle, it's a mile radius, but it is on the heart of the entrance of the College Glen, La Riviera. We have one, two, making this one the third location at the entrance of Folsom Boulevard in La Riviera. There are now, if this one gets approved, just, it will be six locations, six liquor stores. The 7-Eleven, us, SAC Town Liquors, M&amp;M, Paramount, and M&amp;M. I don't understand that we're in a meeting today that improves the city, not add more liquor stores. Even Johns Hopkins did a huge study in 2018 showing that the increase of crime that happens with liquor stores increases by almost plus 30% for every 10% of the same business added to that location. Since 2019, crime has only gone up in that area. How is this going to benefit the community that we live in, where kids don't even cross the street? Unless they're with parents. There are churches that wrote letters. There are parents that wrote letters. There's an entire community that has our back not to do this. We have enough to go with. And I understand that the business is coming, and that's an opportunity for one person to succeed, and I'm for that. But we are on the same property line.
Can you wrap up?
We are on the same property line. 50 yards away, there are now three liquors, that would be now three liquor stores.
Thank you.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
We're doing this for the community.
Thank you. Your time's up. Mr. Serna.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. So is part of your concern that you're communicating competition?
Yes.
Okay. Just want, just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Ian Forner.
Hi, you guys.
So, is part of your concern that you're communicating competition?
Yes.
Okay. Just want, just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Ian Forner.
Hi, you guys. All right. So, I've got a little bit of a unique perspective. Happened to live in the area, also happened to be the commercial broker for this particular location. It has sat vacant for probably the past two years. In regards to that corner, there's, just to the left of the property, if you're facing it, there was a market there previously that had burnt down. To the right of that, there's vacancy after vacancy. The nail salon in that shopping center in the same building that this is going into is struggling and failing. That area, I'm constantly picking up trash, dirt, kicking out the homeless, or pushing them from one corner to another. I can speak to Parme Veer as being a man of his word. His father has a number of locations that he's turned around that are in rough areas. This will be a benefit to the community, simply based on the fact that there's going to be life at that particular corner. That location will not go to a daycare center or something benefiting the community. It is simply a business that'll bring life and bring the ability to help usher and make sure that particular corner is relatively taken care of. I've seen what they've done at other locations, and they seem to put forth a good product.
Thank you. I believe that's all of the public comment. Supervisor Desmond.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I drove out to the property, and very familiar, actually, with that location. Spent some of my formative years in the CHP, patrolling that area. I don't know how familiar all of you are with it. It's on the border of La Riviera and Rosemont, and it's certainly a challenged corridor in that stretch of Folsom Boulevard. And I thought a lot about this. I also talked to the sheriff's East Division commander about this area and the challenges there with crime, and so I think that the sheriff's points and concerns are certainly well-founded. And it also made me think of discussions I've had recently, I think, with Dave, and Todd, and Troy, and probably Barry as well, that, you know, recently I'd been driving from the city of Rancho Cordova, about a mile and a half east of there, and as soon as you leave the city of Rancho Cordova, where Folsom Boulevard looks pretty darn good, and you get into the county, it looks bad. It's got a lot of blight, a lot of empty storefronts. I mean, there's a distinct difference, and I know Supervisor Hume and I would desperately love to see that, that change. And I also, I think about, a lot about, you know, the comment from one of the people, I think, who supported this at the CPAC, is that something is better than nothing. It just occurs to me that, in my opinion, not this thing. I don't think this is the something that's better than nothing. And I think that it's just absurd to say there's not an over-concentration here. There may not be specifically within that, within that census tract, but certainly by looking at the map, there is an over-concentration there. I think that also, in terms of the problems in the community, if you drive out there, you'll see, just on the other side of the railroad tracks, a very large concentration of homeless encampments that are, I think, contributing to some of the challenges in that neighborhood. And I think to myself, you know, we spend a lot of times on these PCNs and try to make a factual distinction, well, maybe upgrading this one to a type 21 would make sense if we can impose the conditions, or allowing this new liquor license at a place that's going to be part of a larger project, that's going to add to some amenities in the community, and I've supported those, but I don't think this is that. And so, I do not support this PCN. I appreciate your investment of this property. I wish you would maybe pursue, possibly pursue other things and have conversations with my office and the county about other things that maybe could be done there, but I don't support staff's recommendation, and in fact, I would like to make a motion to deny the request for the PCN.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 50 is the establishment of a three-year pilot development impact fee offset program to replace Sacramento County's existing fee waiver program for affordable housing projects.
Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Claudia Wade, county engineer representing Community Development Department, and I'll be presenting the three-year pilot development impact fee offset program today. In April this year, staff came to the board with a housing and infill workshop. As a part of that workshop, we asked the board to consider funding incentives to facilitate affordable housing. As a part of this item, the board directed staff to fund county impact fees using the following two funding sources: $5 million from general fund, and up to $5 million from the Affordable Housing Ordinance and Housing Trust Fund. Also to include, to go up to the 50% to 80% area median income housing, and explore a scaled-down version for missing middle, for the missing middle. The current program only allows relief for county impact fees up to 50% AMI, and has a cap of 200 units per year. It should be noted, on average, over the last seven years, the county has permitted about less than 100 units per year, so we never really reached a 200-unit cap. Using board direction, two options are being proposed for board consideration. As a reminder, the option selected would create a three-year pilot program to be revisited on an annual basis or earlier as necessary. Option A is 100% affordable units, up to 80% AMI. Now, the cap is twofold. It looks at $10,000 per unit, just to ensure you can maximize how many units in the pilot program, as well as $5 million of general fund and available Housing Trust Fund, Affordable Housing Ordinance funds, in a three-year period. They are deed-restricted for 30 years, and are guaranteed, as long as it's within the cap, within the cap, after, after they certify that to be affordable housing, at building permit issuance, or for LIHTC and Home Key projects upon receipt of funding award letter. It should also be noted that SHRA expressed a concern with use of the Housing Trust Fund and Affordable Housing Ordinance, and if these funds are encumbered, it could affect state match grant funds and potentially other funding mechanisms. In an effort to not create any, any issues pursuing other funds or benefits for affordable housing developers, staff proposes to use the general funds first. Once they reach a low balance, county staff, along with SHRA, will look at the funds remaining balances in the Affordable Housing Ordinance and Housing Trust Fund, and determine the prioritization in that fiscal year. Option B is very similar to option A, in that it has the same cap, deed-restricted, but in order to use option B, which is the, which is a mixed income option, goes up to 120% AMI and explores that missing middle the board asks us to look at. In order to qualify for that, a project has to have at least 50% of the project, up to 80% AMI, so that's a guardrail. After the 50% qualification, then the 80 to 120% affordable housing units could be explored. Of that, should also be noted that the 80 to 20, 120% AMI units can only be funded through general fund. The Housing Trust Fund and Affordable Housing Ordinance funds can only be used for the up to one, up to the 80% AMI. So, to illustrate what we're talking about, in the infill area itself, the average impact fee for 80% AMI is $5,400 per unit. The average county impact fee for up to 120% AMI is $13,500. So, based on 400 annual units, consistent with a city-county affordable housing program, option A, looking at option A, you have 400 units, at the $5,400 per unit, you're looking at $2.1 million. Now, again, that's the 100% of capital A, affordable housing. Option B, again, you have to have 50% of a project at 80%, up to 80% AMI. Now, you're looking at $1.1 million for the first 200 units, and now you have to apply the $10,000-per-unit cap, since the average is $13,500. Applying 200 units for that missing middle, that's, caps out at $2 million, so now you're looking at $3.1 million. Now, looking at the new-growth area, this scenario better captures the true Sac County average costs, looking through their infill and the new-growth areas. The average impact fee for up to 80% AMI goes up to $11,300, and the average county impact fee for up to 120% AMI is $17,800. Now, again, based on the 400 annual residential units, consistent with the Affordable Housing Plan, option A, assume you're only doing 100% affordable, 400 units, you're having to apply the cap. Now, you're looking at $4 million. Option B, now, again, you're splitting it, 200 of those units have to be up to 80% AMI, the other 200 up to the 120. You have to place the cap on both of those, because they both exceed the 10,000, so now you're looking at a $4 million cost. So, today, we're asking the board to select an option, A or B, 100% affordable or mixed income, up to 120% AMI. Upon selection of an option, the staff will, we're asking the board to direct staff to return to the board with proposed ordinance, proposed ordinance changes, to amend the Sacramento County Code to implement the board-selected action. Staff will then return to the board two weeks later for the second reading of the ordinance. Staff is also asking the board to approve the use of approximately $3.5 million of the initial $5 million from the Affordable Housing Incentive General Fund Reserve. Since April, we've had four different projects come forward, which include San Juan Apartments, Terracina at Wildhawk, Beach Hill Apartments, and 1530 Howe Avenue. Again, upon selecting an option, it's good to remember this is a pilot program. Staff intends to monitor its success and make necessary changes. We also propose to provide reporting to the board on an annual basis. In addition, staff will be meeting with affordable housing developers and SHRA to discuss the program and its implementation. Our first meeting is actually next week, and intend to have ongoing meetings to discuss the program. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Okay. No, Sirna's punched in. I'm going to jump in first, just because I want to, you know, set my table, as far as, you know, where my thoughts are as speakers come. First of all, Claudia, you did a great job. You've done a great job working on this, but I disagree with you when you say that the two are so similar. They're not. They're very dissimilar. And I understand the need for addressing the missing middle. I'm an advocate of that, have been for a long time, but I think the best way to address the missing middle is through the development review process improvements that we heard about earlier. Should we, you know, implement the changes that Mr. DeFonte and his group are developing, I believe that the missing middle will be addressed, and that this is, in my opinion, the intention of this is for, to get more affordable housing in this, in stock, and not necessarily a missing middle conversation at this point. Another point is to kind of alleviate SHRA's concerns regarding the matching. You said first general fund and then Housing Trust Fund. Should we identify any down-the-road further funding that would be available? We could still maintain the order, or does that have to be put in the ordinance of, so that the last pot of money would be the affordable, the trust, the trust fund?
I don't think we have to put that order in the ordinance. My thought is we can discuss that in a resolution, but we leave the framework in the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Serna.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the, the presentation, though one thing I didn't see, and I don't know that it's actually been raised in individual conversations with you or others working on this, because of the way the options have been laid out, it seems to me that there's kind of a glaring omission, at least in terms of one slide that should have been in your deck, which is, and forgive me if I've totally missed this, but how is this, how does this compare to arena proportional needs across the income categories? So, in other words, if part of what we want to achieve, in part with the pilot, is to have this reflect proportionally, kind of where the most need is, or the spectrum, I should say, the spectrum of need is across all income categories, based on our regional housing needs assessment, where do we think this, how does that inform this? Because right now, when I look at this, I can only guess. I don't know who wants to respond to that.
So, Todd, Todd is here. The 400 units that we placed was intended to, as far as the goal, to meet Rena, but I'll have.
Well, the reason I ask the question is because you've introduced the missing middle part, which I appreciate. I get that. I mean, quite frankly, there's, there's need across all spectrums, but there's a different level of need, right? They're not all the same. So, I guess that's what I'm asking, is how did that enter into the thinking of this, how this pilot might help address the proportionality aspect of the Rena challenge?
And I don't know, Dave DeFonte, I don't know if Todd has the specific data at his fingertips relative to Rena. Obviously, there's a distinct need at the affordable housing level, for sure. What we had focused on was consistency with the Affordable Housing Plan and trying to produce a minimum of 400 units a year, which we are on track to do right now, which is an outlier from years prior, when we averaged somewhere around 100 units a year. So, we are making progress, but what we did not specifically tie, and I definitely understand the, the thought that that's missing here, and in hindsight, I agree, tying this to our arena objectives.
Yeah. So, you know, I guess, you know, we've had one supervisor already chime in, in terms of where I think his priorities lie. I guess my overall arching priority is to understand that Rena question a little bit better before trying to guesstimate where it makes sense to achieve that particular objective. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate, yeah, Supervisor Serna's concerns about that. I'd like to understand a little better myself as well. So, Chair's comments on, on the missing middle, they're, they're well-taken by me, because I, I think I mentioned when this first came up in June, that I wanted to explore other options that might be a little more, a little broader in terms of eligibility, but that, I mean, I, that makes sense. I mean, let's focus more on some of these infill development processes and improvements to get at the missing middle. Now, I do think we do have a real problem with, with missing middle, and, and I don't want to see all of our infill projects be affordable housing projects everywhere in my district. I mean, I don't think that's equitable, and I think we have to have a broader inventory of products that, that serve a broader array of folks, so. But I just also want to be clear, Dave, so even if, or, I'm sorry, Claudia, if someone did a project that included both some market-rate units and affordable up to 80% AMI, they would still be eligible for this on the affordable units, right? They wouldn't, in other words, they wouldn't become disqualified just because they're incorporating affordable housing units, or market-rate units in the project, correct?
Right. That's option B, as long as 50% of their project is.
No, no. I'm saying, even if, even if we went with option A, and a developer had a project that was kind of a mix, it had, it had some units that are 80% AMI and some that were market-rate, they would still be eligible for the affordable units.
On the affordable.
On the affordable units. Okay. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that was the case. And do we have a sense, one other thing, that the 400 units, you know, do you think these would all be primarily infill projects, or a lot of them would be, I mean, what do you expect in terms of who would be interested in taking advantage of this? Can you make any kind of projections or prognostications?
You can probably speak to the ones on the slide and as to where they're located, but it would certainly be a mix. You know, we are seeing a lot of infill projects right now, for sure, but we do expect, as those new-growth areas start to really pop, and right now, you know, a lot of that growth is concentrated in the vineyard area, but as new, new-growth areas come online, we could see that grow, and that shift may happen out to the new-growth areas, but, you know, it's going to be a couple of years before some of those other new-growth areas really come online. areas really come online and get to the point where income is generated to where we can be building those projects.
Okay. And maybe speaking out of both sides of my mouth here a little bit, but I certainly don't want them all to go to the new growth areas. I want to make sure that some of these are, you know, a good portion of them are going to the infill areas.
And the way this is set up right now, it's first comes first served, and that's very consistent with the City of Sacramento and their project or their, their program.
Okay.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
So when you say first come, first serve, if there's not as much need for the missing middle and you work your way through the affordable, does the pilot go to the affordable side of it, or is it just going to fund less opportunity?
It's the first, it's the projects, it would be the projects that would be in the queue.
Okay.
And so that's the first come, first serve, as long as we have, we're within the cap ranges.
I just want to say I'm sensitive to the missing middle, but I'm worried that by bringing in missing middle, it dilutes what's already a real need that we don't have enough of, enough resources for. So I, my preference is the option A, and I kind of agree with the Chair's comments as well, that maybe there's other ways we can address the missing middle. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. That's all the board comments at this point. Do we have public comment?
We do. Hold on.
Before public comment, Chair Kennedy, I do have an answer on the RENA question. We, and this is on an annual basis, so for the very low and low income categories, we're looking at 879 units and 463 units respectively each year for the next five years. So 1,332 combined between those two. At the moderate income category, we're looking at 749 units per year. So if you look at it in the very low and low, we're almost double in terms of the need to Supervisor Serna's question.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Other comment, please.
William?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience.
Well, thanks. I'm actually William Paveo, and I'm with the Sacramento Housing Alliance's Developers' Advisory Committee. I'm also the former Director of the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, TCAC, at the state level. And first, I want to commend the board for your interest and willingness in spending general fund resources on affordable housing. Second, SHA recommends piloting option A and do that over the three-year period, as staff has presented it in its report. We base that recommendation of option A on a couple of things, one of which is the California Housing Partnership's data on need. Extremely low-income households in the county, 83% of those households are severely cost-burdened, meaning they're paying more than half of their, their household incomes for, for housing. Similarly, very low-income households, 54% here in the county are severely cost-burdened. That cost burden rate declines as you go up the income scale until you get to the 80% to 120% AMI level, where only 1% is extremely or severely cost-burdened. So we urge the board to focus on where the need is greatest, and option A, we believe, will get you there. Third, we recommend that the board apply two provisions from the Affordable Housing Ordinance Fund to this piloted program, one of which is that at least 10% of the developments' units must be affordable and rented to extremely low-income households. We think that's a good provision over in the Affordable Housing Ordinance Fund. Think it would be good to apply here. And then also implement the provision that at least half of the fee dollars would go to larger deals that are dedicated to housing very low and low-income households. Just a couple of other things. Want to assure the fee waivers are regulated and monitored by a responsible public agency like SHRA. And then finally, if those funds are exhausted, don't reach into those other affordable housing buckets, but rather, let's take a look again at the general fund. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, William. And I have--
Don't go anywhere.
I have full confidence that these funds would be--
Don't go anywhere.
That these funds would be overseen by a responsible government agency, being the County of Sacramento. Thank you very much.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. What I didn't hear you reference is something that I suspect we're going to hear from others in the queue here, which is this concern that by, if I have this, if I understand this correctly, that if we provide any kind of government-assisted fee waiver for deep targeted projects, and that's, you know, that's kind of the way that staff has teed this up in terms of options, that we might compromise those projects' ability to use certain tax credit assistance. So is that something that, since you stated in your brief bio that you've been very well associated with the Administration of Tax Credits in the State of California, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I actually was puzzled by that, that portion of the, of the staff report. And so, yeah, I would, I would seek an explanation of that because we saw deals all the time where localities were waiving fees, and that was credited as a local contribution in the competitive scheme at that time. Now, unless something's changed since my absence, that was always the case. So you might, you might get clarification from staff on that.
That's very helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Chris?
Hello again, Board. Chris Norum, North State, BIA. Appreciate you guys bringing this up. I think this was stemmed from the larger discussion that was had here four or five months ago about just ways that we can improve things, and I think that the distinction between the, you know, moderate income or lower income categories, I think came from the board as looking at missing middle. We don't have a formal position on this, one way or the other. I think that the fact that you're spending general fund resources on this is really helpful. The affordable builders that we have have said that this program and its overarching design and how they use it in the City of Sacramento has been extremely helpful at making projects pencil out. So I'm also a little puzzled about the intricacies of the financing that I think we need some people who have direct experience on that to make sure we're not doing something inadvertently wrong. But anyway, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and, you know, the City of Sacramento has seen these funds be used up effectively, and they have to go back and they have to try to see, is there more money in the till that we can plow into this? And that's been an ongoing process. So it's one that you have to continue to work on and adjust, and I know that Claudia's going to continue to look very closely at what are the effects of this, and are there any unintended consequences? And we have to continue to work together and retool this. And so our members who work on affordable housing are glad to participate in that process to make sure that it's successful. So thank you for your willingness to put some county resources into this. It's pound for pound, probably extremely helpful for what you guys can do to move the ball in terms of getting projects penciling out. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Norum. And Mr. Norum makes a good point when he draws the comparison and the experience that the City of Sacramento has had, which is another concern I have about option B, is that I think that we would exhaust the funds very rapidly under, under B and still not achieve what we're looking to achieve as far as the affordability factor. Next speaker, please. You notice how I avoided butchering your last name?
Oh, thank you. And I got the spelling out right this time. Thank you. So good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. I'm Rich Cirallo, Regional Director of Housing Development for Mercy Housing Sacramento Office, and I'm here with two comments on item 50 on today's agenda. With respect to using the housing trust funds and/or the affordable housing ordinance funds, the write-up on the side points out how these funds are used to leverage state funds from HCD. It would be unfortunate to lose the multiplier effect of these funds to bring more outside dollars to our community to build more affordable housing. It's really an opportunity to sort of grow the pie in that regard. And then my second comment is using these funds to target area median incomes in excess of 80% would not put these limited resources to their best and highest use to produce more affordable housing. The market can serve these, these, these units targeted above 80% better than, you know, than those below. And so, you know, thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you very much. Mark Weiss?
Thank you, Board Chair Kennedy, Vice Chair Serna, and members of the board. So I'm Mark Weiss with Pacific Housing. We're a nonprofit affordable housing developer and the developer of the Beach Hill Apartments, so we have a vested interest in seeing this approved. I echo your, your thoughts, comments, Supervisor Kennedy, on option A, and Supervisor Desmond. Also, Mr. Cirallo's comments, I agree with wholeheartedly, and I think others will. We really need these, we appreciate the fee waiver pilot program in this, in this capacity, and I think it can provide a valuable resource. We also greatly appreciate our, our relationship with Sacramento Housing Development Agency and their commitment to funding of this project, and do not want to, would really echo that the general funds, general funds get exhausted, and that if anything, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund gets expanded for reasons previously stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Darren Bobrowski?
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. Darren Bobrowski with USA Properties Fund. USA Properties Fund is a 43-year-old real estate affordable housing developer based in Roseville. We have developed over 100 properties containing over 18,000 units in California, including 27 properties containing 3,500 units in Sacramento County. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on the proposed impact fee offset program. USA is concerned about potential unintended consequences that may arise from the program if using housing trust fund and affordable housing ordinance funds to fund the program. Affordable housing finance is complex and sometimes has been seen to have, I'm sorry. Affordable housing finance is complex, and sometimes what is seen as to be a beneficial incentive may have unintended consequences. The use of housing trust fund and affordable housing ordinance funds for the impact fee program has some of these unintended consequences. The use of these funds will result in the reduction of otherwise available affordable housing tax credit equity for projects on approximately 45 cents for every dollar of housing trust fund or affordable housing ordinance funds. This will increase the necessary subsidy from SHRA to make projects feasible and therefore lower the amount of projects that can be produced. We calculate this reduction by approximately 20% of the units in a project. USA, if using the funds, other funds, we do support that as proposed in option A, and as well as it maintains the ability to use the HCD's local housing fund program. USA asks that you move forward the program with the general fund money as recommended by staff, minimize the use of affordable housing and a housing trust fund program money, monitor the implementation, and return to the board in one year with analysis of whether the program has fulfilled its intended objectives and whether the unintended consequences have materialized.
Can you wrap up?
Sure. USA also has concerns about using the money for the missing middle. And just a statistic to provide to you, the Sacramento median income at 120% level is $99,000 for a one-person household, $141,000 for a four-person household. So USA asks that you prioritize the use for the deeper income targeted, needed households. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. If you, everyone wants to leave the podium so soon today. Could you please come down? Thank you for your testimony. And we're in receipt of email correspondence through George Phillips, your representative, in which you've outlined some of the same concerns you just mentioned. When we had a chance, I think it was last week, to meet over Zoom and understand the precise concerns you mentioned about the potential unintended consequences of potentially compromising the use of tax credits for projects if we use housing trust fund monies to offset the fees, and correct me if I'm mischaracterizing that. What I didn't see, and what I thought I asked for in terms of more information from you, was any statutory reference to how that would occur. So since we met on Zoom, can you cite again, kind of in, whether it's, I don't know, tax code or what, but, and maybe, maybe our legal counsel has insights, or perhaps I see our Executive Director of SHRA here to enlighten us. But that's what I'm really hungry to understand, is legally, what is, what's in law that stipulates that that is not advisable or could, you know, possibly have these unintended consequences that you've been advocating may happen?
Sure. Thank you. And since we met, and thank you for the opportunity to meet, the tax credit is in Section 42 of the IRS Code. It is a fairly complex code, and therefore, there's a whole industry of tax councils and accountants that oversee it and advise us on it and interpret the code. And generally, as we've been advised by our tax attorneys, Novogradik and Company and Resnick, is that in order to obtain tax credits for a cost, you have to pay the cost. When you waive a fee, it is then not included in what's called eligible basis, and you don't obtain tax credits for it. So in the example of bringing, using general fund money to the project, you're adding new money to the project because while we don't get tax credits on the impact fee that's waived, you're backfilling it with new money that's not affordable housing money. If you're using affordable housing trust fund or the affordable housing ordinance funds, what happens is we also still don't get tax credit, but now you're backfilling, and those tax credits produce about 45 cents on the dollar in equity for, for the project. So what happens if you're backfilling with housing trust fund money? You now have taken that 55 cents, would have, would have just balanced it if you included it in basis, and you're actually increasing the amount of subsidy that the county and SHRA needs to provide to the project. If you were to start over from scratch and not have this program to begin with, I would advise and testify that don't have the program at all because you're losing the leverage of the tax credit program by using other affordable housing money.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. To the chair, if, and I know we have one other speaker, perhaps Ms. Dozier could come down and give us some ideas about what has been claimed here.
LaShelle Dozier with SHRA.
So LaShelle, I think you're probably well aware of how this concern has taken shape over the last few weeks.
Yes.
Can you, can you speak to whether or not you agree, disagree, whether or not you've explored what, kind of the magnitude of what this potential unintended consequence might be and how it might manifest itself?
Yes. So, and we've been a part of the discussions and meeting with the county as well as the development community regarding this, and there are the unintended consequences that Darren just really outlined in terms of just how the financing works for affordable housing development. The other issue that is of concern is that those affordable housing fees are ones that we use to leverage for other funds from the State of California. And I believe it was at our last meeting, it might have been our last meeting, we came before you, and we're applying for $5 million of funding from the state, but we have to have that money matched by the local housing trust fund fees. So if we don't have that $5 million in the bank, we can't pull down additional funding from the state that we use as a gap financing for the projects that you see come before you. So it's not just the issue in terms of the tax credit leveraging, but it's also another way that we leverage those funds for specific types of programs that the state offers. And the whole point of that program is to incentivize local governments to have housing trust funds.
And thank you for that. Do we kind of have a sense of how many deep targeted project applications that come to our attention either through your agency or in general in the county that rely heavily on tax credits in their pro forma to pencil?
The majority. The majority-- The majority use tax credits.
And is there, is there, and since I've, you know, heard from you countless times over the years, how seemingly rare it is to actually succeed to get, especially the 9% tax credits, just because there's so much competition. From a practical standpoint, do you think there's a mechanical adjustment that could be made here where we wouldn't put at risk successfully acquiring the tax credit assistance for certain projects if the timing was such that, you know, the determination that a tax credit is not going to be assigned to a project, could then, that project then benefit from the fee waiver, even if it came from the Housing Trust Fund? Does that make sense?
So, if I understand you, you're saying if it were not a traditional tax credit-type project, would it then benefit from the fee waiver?
Right.
And the answer would be yes, in that regard.
Okay. And so, do we have an idea of just kind of percentage-wise, like, what's our, what's our batting average in Sacramento County for, especially the 9%?
I think, maybe, Darren, are you familiar with that? It varies, but what I do know is, in our last round, we had $49,000 worth of gap financing requests, and we only had about $8 million.
Forty-nine thousand?
Forty-nine million.
Gotcha.
Forty-nine million dollars, and we only had $8 million. So, there is definitely enough projects, and those are all tax credit projects. The, the type of projects that don't require tax credits are projects like Project Home Key, and that's because the state really requires, you know, puts in so much financing for those type projects.
So, this really is a question in your, in your estimation, that the color of money does matter, right?
Absolutely.
In terms of the assistant, the type, where the assistance and how the assistance is funded.
That is.
So, if it was 10 million completely from general fund, then it wouldn't necessarily be the same risk? Is that correct?
And you mean if you only gave $10 million to a project?
No, if it was 10 million instead of five and five from Housing Trust Fund and General Fund, if it was all 10 million from General Fund, then the risk to tax credit assistance wouldn't materialize?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I understand.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, lastly, for our county council, have we, have we looked into this IRS code issue?
We have not, we were not, had not been asked to specifically look into this issue, but we certainly could, and report back.
All right. Thank you.
Catherine McFadden.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Catherine McFadden, and I'm the Vice President of Jamboree Housing Corporation. We are a statewide nonprofit developer. I am happy to be here to applaud the county in seeking ways to incentivize affordable housing through reforming the county's existing fee waiver program. Jamboree has some concerns, as expressed earlier, regarding the proposed use of the $5 million in Housing Trust Fund and Affordable Housing Ordinance Funds for the impact fee offset program. The use of these sources may lead to reduced tax credit equity, as been discussed, for affordable housing projects necessitating increased subsidies from SHRA to make projects feasible. This shift could decrease the total number of affordable housing units that SHRA can assist, potentially stalling projects and impacting the overall affordable housing production in the county. On the other hand, funding the impact fee offset program through other sources, such as the general fund, can help maintain and potentially increase the resources available at SHRA for subsidizing new affordable housing. Extending the fee waivers to the missing middle will compete with funds that could otherwise support the creation of more affordable housing units that are targeting deeper affordability, which often require more gap financing. In many cases, rents for missing middle are comparable to market rate. Instead of focusing on resources where the demand is less critical, it is essential to prioritize support for households facing greater housing needs, based on RENA, as discussed. Jamboree recommends Option A, which ensures that funding is directed toward projects that require at most maximizing the impact of available resources to fund much-needed affordable housing in the county. Thank you so much for your time to comment on this matter today.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. That's all the public comments I have. Bring it back to the board, and I will move staff recommendation with Option A as the preferred option, and a one-year report back from time of approval.
So, knowing there's a motion and a second, I would offer a friendly amendment that, well, let me ask this. What's the time, and this is for staff? What's the time sensitivity on this? I assume we have, at our leisure, the ability to perhaps refine this a little bit further, because this is concerning to me, this question about the tax credit threat. And to me, I think we need to have a better understanding or make perhaps a longer discussion about, if we're going to do a pilot, let's do it right. Let's not set out and do a pilot that, should it somehow gain legs and it becomes something more than a pilot, could, you know, have some of those unintended consequences that I think we want to avoid. So, first question is, any time urgency to this?
Maybe I can jump in there. I think if there's any urgency, it's that there's a few projects sort of waiting in the wings for these offsets. And I do understand the concern and agree that we certainly don't want to create a program that then causes us issues. Maybe my question would be, are we in a position, knowing what we know today, to craft an ordinance and bring it back to the board in short order during the October timeframe, but be general enough to where the funding isn't outlined with such specificity that we don't have wiggle room to go one way or the other? And I think the answer is yes. So, I think we can bring something back to you, and if we find that that's a problem, we'll certainly report back. But I think we can bring an ordinance to you that's general enough to give us that flexibility, and then I would also commit, not only coming back within a year at the latest, but we would also want to come back before we exhaust the general fund dollars. If we find that the use of those other two funding pots is problematic, given the conversation today, we'd want to come back to the board before that year is up to talk about next steps.
Perhaps I wasn't clear. That was my motion.
Excellent.
Thank you.
But I, I didn't hear that in the motion at all, so. I'm glad staff, I'm glad staff chimed in. So, in other words, we would come back if we find that the, the funding, using the Housing Trust Fund is problematic relative to the tax credits. Do we know right now, or is there, I see Mr. Villanueva kind of shaking his head, that there's some reliable source of funds to pull the other complimentary 5 million from somewhere else?
I would, like Mr. DeFante said, we were talking about this before coming in here, and right now you have about, I think it's $3.5 million set aside that would come into those four projects. We can certainly use the current $5 million and see where those projects go, and return to the board if we start to run into that money, and start talking about what other options we have. There's obviously other options that could be more general fund, but I think Claudia said that they're meeting with SHRA this week or next week to start talking about the impacts and making sure we truly understand the impacts to the trust funds.
Okay, so the friendly amendment I do want to make to the, to the motion is that that is a date certain, that we're coming back to have that conversation, because, again, we're kind of setting an expectation in terms of a total of 10 million versus what we feel comfortable with, which is about half of that right now. That's, that's the sense in the room I get. So, is that something we can come back to before the end of the year?
I think we would absolutely want to come back if we start to get the sense that those, that first $5 million is going to run out. I would, I think Amanda is here. You know, we can definitely chat about if we want to set a date certain, or if that's the direction of the board, we'll certainly do so, and check back in even earlier than when we get the sense that those dollars are running out.
Then that's my amendment, is to come back before the end of the calendar year to have that discussion.
That we can do. I'm good with that. Mr. DeFante? Okay. All right, and there's discussion, questions? Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you, everybody. Next item, please.
Item 51 is the bi-annual update on the county and city homeless partnership agreement.
Good morning. Siobhan Katari, Deputy County Executive, Social Services. And I just wanted to briefly introduce this item, just to say, this is our third six-month report of the city-county partnership agreement. It feels like we've been doing this for a long time, but this is really just 18 months' worth of data that you're going to see. And this is, we're 18 months or more now into a five-year partnership agreement. What you'll be hearing today from our team and from the city team is some pretty significant results when it comes to addressing homelessness within the city of Sacramento specifically. But I did want to say that one really unseen significant result is the partnership that we've really created with the city. We don't talk about it a lot, but what we are doing at the ground level is our teams are working very effectively across the city and county lines in ways that we haven't done before, and so I'm really proud of both teams. And so, I wanted to basically thank the city and their staff. Brian Pedro is here today from the city, and he'll be here to answer questions. I wanted to thank Sacramento Steps Forward, SHRA, and also all of our providers who are providing the services, boots on the ground, day in and day out. Most importantly, I do want to also lift up in my appreciation for our county teams. Emily Halken and her team, Tim Lutz and his team, have both been working tirelessly to ensure that we're getting services out in the field. And then finally, just a big shout out to our board for your investments, your commitment to this issue. You have made unprecedented investments into serving the unhoused over the last several years, and it's really paying off. And special thanks to David Villanueva, our CEO, for his support of these efforts as well. So, with that, I also wanted to just lastly say, people are asking me what's next a lot with the partnership agreement. You'll see a lot of the boxes have been checked, asking me if we're going to amend the partnership agreement, and what my answer has been is, the board adopted the Regional Coordinated Homeless Action Plan in March, which is really our region's plan. How is the county and the city going to work together with other jurisdictions, with our system partners? That's really where our focus is going to be going forward. So, you'll hear a lot more about the RCHAP as we move forward, and excited to share the results with you today. So, I'll turn it over to Emily.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, board. Emily Halken, the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. And I'm going to really quickly share with you and walk through some of the accomplishments that Siobhan already started to highlight, that the city and the county have met under our partnership agreement. And then Tim is going to walk you through the data associated with his behavioral health teams. And as Siobhan noted, my partner here, Brian Pedro, is here with the city's Department of Community Response, and he's available if there's any detailed questions on the city's efforts, because this is really reflective of what's happening in the city of Sacramento, or if you just want to hear more from him about the great work that him and his team are doing out there on the streets of the city of Sacramento. So, as you all know, the partnership agreement generally covers four areas: outreach, services, shelter and housing, and then training and system support and information. And as Siobhan said, overall, we have met all of the benchmarks that were outlined in the partnership agreement 18 months ago. So, I'm going to go through the slides, but just highlight one or two from each of the areas, but happy to address any of them. For outreach, the most significant thing that's talked about quite a bit is that we do have full teams working throughout the city of Sacramento on a daily basis. Those teams include 25 staff that are supported through the city's Department of Community Response. That includes both city staff as well as contracted staff that they manage. I believe we're now at 12 county behavioral health workers, which is two more than was required in the partnership agreement, and then 15 additional contracted outreach staff through Community Health Works, that the Managed Care Plans helped to support and fund, and have committed to another year of funding to help connect folks to CalAim Services and other health services. The outputs of this collaboration, which you can see here, this shows the data that the city has collected from January to June. I do want to note, this is exclusive of the behavioral health efforts. Tim's going to walk you through that data in just a moment. You can see that in just the first six months of this year, in the city of Sacramento, over 2,200 people were engaged, and over 43,000 service touches were provided to those individuals. And as a reminder, I will be back with you in two weeks to share this very similar data for what's happening in the unincorporated county, as well as our Parkway system, so you can sort of look at the totality of what's happening throughout the county. This is just the city of Sacramento. Under the category of services, one of the main outcomes that we're really proud of in the partnership agreement is operations of four of our behavioral health core centers in the city, including, as many of you will recall, one that was specifically added just downtown, directly as a result of this partnership agreement. Under sheltering and housing, as you know, we've been making a lot of efforts and been in front of you with a lot of requests for funding and approvals for various new sheltering programs. The most significant one associated with the partnership agreement is the development of the Stockton Boulevard Safe Stay Site, which is just in the city of Sacramento, as well as in District 2 of the county. It is being built by the state of California, and we believe will be finished before the end of this calendar year, and that will bring 175 new beds to serve folks who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness in the city of Sacramento, and we're really excited about that partnership. And then finally, under the category of training and system support information, we're collectively working with the city, as well as our partners at Sacramento Steps Forward, to ensure that the data that we're collecting, some of which you're seeing today, and some of which you're going to continue to see as I come before you in various capacities, is shared and reported out very regularly. And then we are also providing some very targeted training to our city partners and some county systems. For example, Tim's team did some trainings on 5150s. We've done some trainings on how to access benefit programs through the Department of Human Assistance and other systems like that. So, as a high-level summary, again, just sort of hitting back that the four categories, you know, everything shows green here, does not mean that we're taking our foot off the gas, but it does mean that we have accomplished over the last 18 months a significant amount of work. And as Siobhan said, a lot of appreciation, not only to our partners, the city of Sacramento, obviously my partner, Tim Lutz, and other system partners here who have really made this impactful, and we're really looking forward to continuing that work. Before I hand it over to Tim, I wanted to see if there's any questions for me, or for Brian, or if you'd like to hear anything more from him about the efforts of him and his team in the city.
I see none.
Great. Then with that, I'll hand it over to Tim to walk you through the behavioral health efforts.
Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services. Double checking, there should be a second PowerPoint that has the behavioral health While they're queuing that up, I'll just say also, some of my HART team here, Monica and Sheri, just want to acknowledge really the boots-on-the-ground incredible work that they're doing, along with Brian's DCR team. It really does feel like we're getting into this groove of this partnership, and like any partnership, you have the norming, storming, forming, identified ways that we can do things better, work through processes, and really appreciate their ongoing spirit toward, toward service delivery. So, I'll say, actually, first of all, before I start that, I'll say that this report reflects, I know what has been something we've been working at for a while, which is, how do we get more data into not just what HART's doing, but also broadly speaking, how are we serving the unsheltered community across Sacramento? So, when I walk through some of this data, I'll, I'll show you some information on both across our entire behavioral health system and also HART, and draw some contrasts that I think are important for us as we continue to look at this data and make policy decisions on where do we want to allocate the most resources, where are we seeing engagement, where can we do things differently, improve our process? some contrasts, but also show the system in totality. So looking first here at this slide, the upper-left corner is showing you behavioral health referrals and linkages outside of HART. So it doesn't include any of the work that HART's doing. What we saw from this, 757 individuals were referred to behavioral health providers. That means they were screened, engaged with at some point through the system, and referred into a behavioral health service. In a couple slides, I'll get into more detail about what those services looked like and where they went. But really, what we wanted to highlight here is, of those 757, 609, or 80%, 80.4% to be exact, were successfully linked to services. Really, really good conversion rate for people to get that referral and actually start to engage and participate in services. When we look at the HART team across, and again, this is the city and shelter-specific team information, what we saw, they had 2,235 outreach attempts. Now, again, there's duplication in here, because they're seeing people multiple times, sometimes multiple times in a week, trying to work on relationship-building and engagement. Of those, 240 actually truly engaged, and then 209 were screened, 219 were actually referred into services.
So Tim, I ask this every time, just for the people to understand, because these are really confusing terms. Just once again, explain the difference between an engagement attempt and an engagement.
So yes, engagement attempt is, you know, it's the cold knock. It's the come up to their tent, come up to them on the street. When they actually engage, it means they're willing to have the conversation about behavioral health services, and what treatment might look like, what their needs might be. The next level then is, okay, I'm engaged, now I agree to be screened. That's going through the screening process to identify, what is the most appropriate placement for you? Through that screening, we then refer to what those are. It could be a core center, it could be a substance use treatment facility, it could be an FSP. So when we then say they're linked, that means they were referred to that center, they showed up, or they started to engage in services with a provider, and that's ultimately when they start to work through treatment.
Supervisor Serna.
Thanks. So on the subject of engagement, then, is that, is there a list of questions if there's a, if someone decides to engage? Then is there a tablet in front of someone? Does someone have a checklist? Like, you know, have you, you know, been addicted? If you have, for how long? What's your history? Is there kind of a common inquiry list? So it permits the person doing, initiating the engagement to understand consistently, from person to person, you know, what the condition is and what the needs are?
Absolutely. There's an assessment tool that, or a screening tool, that staff are trained to do. One of the benefits to some of the changes by using peers is our peers in the field can also do that screening, which, again, often, people are more comfortable talking to someone who has lived experience and walking through, what are some, you know, personal questions about their history, drug use, mental illness? And so going through that assessment, that's where they make the determination of what the appropriate referral should be.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So want to chat a little bit about, just, and I don't want to get mired in the weeds on this, because this one could be a while. I did want to highlight this reflecting some of the front doors or pathways into behavioral health. This is where we're seeing a lot of our unsheltered population coming in through our front doors. A couple that I think are important, if you think about this broadly, there are legal pathways, things like care court, AOT, diversion, there's community-based and outreach crisis response, so Community Wellness Response Team, mobile crisis support. And then there are our community centers for walk-ins, like our core centers. Within this system, where I think we're looking a lot at is Mental Health Urgent Care Clinic and the corresponding Mental Health Treatment Center, because that is a place for people in crisis, again, unsheltered or not, that can do law enforcement drop-offs. And as we roll into December, it also will be able to do our EMS delivery through the Triage to Alternate Destination program. We see this as a critical front door for helping support this population.
Supervisor Desmond? Okay.
And then additionally, the crisis receiving for behavioral health, or CRIB, is another key area that we see as an entry point for law enforcement when they're encountering unsheltered and suspect substance use. As SB 43 starts to ramp up next year, again, this will be another critical piece that we see helping support that infrastructure and linking people to services. And then, of course, our CARE Act, recognizing we go live December, we know we would be expecting to see a lot more volume coming in through CARE Act referrals, through our, you know, hospital partners, city partners, police, and other avenues.
Thank you, Mr. Sheri. Thank you, Tim. I like that chart. And those front doors, with the exception of HART, so that's when you, the previous slide where you referred to the 757 unhoused, those are those different doors, right?
Yes.
That they may have gone through.
That's it.
And just to confirm, that was the information? I think that wasn't included the first time we did this presentation, right? Okay. So we weren't capturing everybody that we were really getting into referrals into programs. And then, I'm glad you mentioned SB 43. So SB 43 really is, it relates to those interventions, whether that's care court or advanced outpatient treatment, right? I mean, that's where, that's, no? Oh, that's not accurate?
Yeah. SB 43 will, those, it's catered toward when somebody gets placed on a 5150 hold within the community. Right now, the reason for that 5150 hold needs to be based on a mental illness, psychosis. In this case, SB 43 broadens that to also include severe substance use disorder. So if law enforcement is encountering people in the community, severe substance use, it provides a more clear pathway for placing that hold, taking them to emergency room for detox, or another facility that can safely do detox and hopefully start to engage with treatment.
Got it. Okay. For some reason, I thought that it also expands kind of eligibility for enrollment in some of these other intervention-type programs.
It might. There's multiple ways to be involuntarily admitted into treatment, care court, assisted outpatient treatment. What Tim was saying is that SB 43 will expand the definition of who can be involuntarily enrolled in those programs, although it's nuanced, because care court has a very narrow window of folks with psychotic disorders and schizophrenia who can be admitted. So just looking at those definitions. But it, these, all of these things together just open pathways to involuntary treatment.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. It's not on here, I don't, I wouldn't expect it necessarily to be on here now, but next time I see this chart, I'm hopeful it's on here. And Siobhan, maybe you can speak to this. The investment that the county has made, working with One Community Health to introduce the new street medicine effort, I think would necessarily have to have some kind of co-occurring engagement protocols for behavioral health, not just as it relates to their physical health. So I assume that, Tim, when you say hospitals and city partners, that that would be included. And as the One Community Health model takes shape and is deployed, are we going to be using some of the same tools that you mentioned early in the presentation that the One Community Health professionals would also be using? That's something I'm extremely interested in understanding.
Actually, that's an excellent point, because right now, so much of street medicine is coordinated through, like, for instance, our primary care team is where street medicine is embedded, primarily medically focused. We'll go to the same places that HART is going. I think what we should be looking at is, how do we strengthen that connection when we're going out and looking at those co-deployments? We're doing some of that in public health with our sexual health clinic, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to continue to look at it then, and where HART team is going out. And I think that dovetails into my question of, how do we be more effective, recognizing that HART's doing incredible work, but it's been really hard to get people to commit to engaging and linking to services through HART, versus we're seeing better engagement through other access points?
Great. Thank you.
So this, speaking of access points, I think this is, you know, one of the most interesting slides in terms of, this is showing you our system as a whole, where through January to June of 2024, how many people were, in this case, you can see the upper-left is saying how many were referred. So these are the people that we did the assessment, the screening for, we referred them to services. There were 1,129 of them in total. So this is taking HART and all of our other front doors. And you could see from the stats kind of how they entered the system, that is their housing status. And then your upper-right-hand graph is showing you how many actually then were linked. So 800 total were ultimately linked to one type of service. Really interesting, when you look at the lower-left-hand side, which is the linkage type by program. So looking at that, you can see about 33% of the unsheltered, the majority of them are going into a substance use residential treatment program. And then another 27.5% are going into an FSP program. Then you have rounding out, our outpatient core programs is about 22%, plus some of the other programs across behavioral health. But the majority of them are getting into what we would expect, which is a high-level, either substance use residential or an FSP program.
Keep it on there, Tim. In that one, the bar chart, the vertical bar chart, withdrawal management, 1%?
Yeah.
Doesn't that seem low?
It does seem low, and I think that's where, with SB 43, I would expect to see more of that. We're also investing in more beds in withdrawal management, because it does seem low, and it does stick out.
Yeah.
As we would, I would, certainly would expect more of them.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, lastly, you can see on the lower-right-hand side is telling you their housing status today, as in when we pulled this report in July, to give you a sense of how they entered the system, but also where they ended up. And I'll note on there, about 12% just shy are housed, no immediate risk of homelessness. A number then, 20% almost, were sheltered, another 4%, and I expect that to grow as beds come online or in the Bridge Housing Program. So we're getting people into a more stable environment, working on treatment, and then hopefully getting them into permanent supportive housing. Now, these next three graphs, and I'll go through them fairly quickly unless there are questions, is really highlighting now HART's work within the community. And we continue to modify our approach. If there's different ways that you want to see this data, always open for feedback, recognizing we're presenting a lot of different information. So what this first upper-left is showing you is the engagements by month. So you can see here, the team averaged about 300 to 400 engagements, this is the city team per month. And our most successful engagements, though, when you look then of, does that engagement result in, or I should say, does that outreach result in true engagement? We're seeing the highest amount of engagement in the shelter team. And that's important when you consider the fact there are two people assigned to the shelter team, and the 12 assigned to the city team. The shelter team is just getting people much more committed to wanting to engage, wanting to go through the screen, and wanting to get linked for services. So we're seeing definite success with that, and our question to ourselves then is, do we need to bolster resources on our shelter team? And it also speaks to the fact that I think we all intrinsically know, but becomes a challenge for us, which is, people are far more likely to be at a spot that they're willing to engage in services when they're not on the streets, that they're in a safe enough environment, that their basic needs are being at least addressed. And then this next slide is showing you how many actually agreed to be screened. And again, you look at the very top line, the blue line, is the shelter screening line. Those two workers by far getting the highest number of people who are willing to then be screened. And that ultimately leads to this somewhat complicated graph, which is, what this is trying to tell you is, within HART, where people wound up. So purple is for outpatient treatment, blue is FSP, pink is substance use narcotic treatment, orange is substance use outreach, and light blue is substance use residential. And then you could see, somewhat small, again, apologize for that, on the lower part where you're seeing what team it was. Again, those, the largest bars that you're seeing on there are the shelter team referrals into outpatient and FSP programs.
So by that, our greatest success of getting people into programs is through shelters?
Yeah, at this point, with our HART team, absolutely. So that really concludes my summer of the data. Happy to answer any more questions, or do some follow-up if there's areas that you'd like us to look at. Certainly, we continue to improve this report each six-month period, and want to be able to answer questions. I was happy to be able to provide broader system questions that I know this board's been asking a lot of. So our team continues to fine-tune our approach.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you for the data, the presentation, Tim, answering our questions. Is it appropriate to think in terms of, again, the continuum and kind of the spectrum of how we engage and shelter folks, or attempt to, that at one end is finding folks that are chronically homeless, that are literally homeless, to use the wording that you referenced earlier, that are, you know, living outdoors, living outside? And then the other end is permanent supportive housing, right? So at least that's what I can gauge from this. But should we be thinking about the, kind of, in my estimation, what the final part of success looks like, which is self-sustainability? So renting, having a job, renting an apartment? And how could we maybe think about amending how we cite this, or reflect on the data so that we actually understand the conclusion of the success story? So we know about those that actually are not having to necessarily rely on what today just looks like, the conclusion being, you know, permanent supportive housing is the ultimate goal or solution. So is that something that we could track, or we should track?
Yeah, maybe myself or Emily could take this one. So part of the Regional Coordinated Housing Action Plan, Homeless Action Plan, is really to look at those integrative services and those outcomes as a result of all of the services we're doing. So you're absolutely correct, is, we can't just be looking at whether someone's enrolled in behavioral health services, per se. We really need to be looking at how are people's lives better as a result of all of these services combined. So we are working with Sacramento Steps Forward to put some metrics into that RCHAP right now, so that we can better measure those types of outcomes. Were they, did they become self-sufficient? Were they, did they become self-sufficient? Did they maintain housing over time? Those types of things.
That's encouraging to hear, because ultimately, at least in my opinion, success is not having to rely on any of it. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Tim. Who's up next? Okay.
Unless there's questions, this is just informational item, and we're happy to answer any questions, but also happy to...
Lot of data, very helpful. Yesterday, when we had our briefing, there was some updated numbers that aren't included in here that you're going to share with the board?
When I come back in two weeks with the county's version, yes, I'll have those, as well as the updated numbers. You got a little preview of yesterday.
Great. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Pedro for being here today. See what an easy crowd you have up here, Brian?
All right. Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Next item.
Item 52 is the reclassification of Stockton Boulevard to a Smart Growth Street within the general plan, board concurrence with Alternative 1 from the Stockton Boulevard Bicycle Track feasibility study, and the environmental document is exempt.
Thank you, Board, for hanging in there. This will be a short item.
I realize I'm the only thing standing between everyone and lunch, so I will definitely keep that in mind.
You think we have lunch?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. I'm Cameron Shue, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation. So I'm here today to present the Stockton Boulevard Complete Streets Project and Class 4 Bike Way feasibility study. Okay. So some background on this project, we received an active transportation program grant to study the Stockton Boulevard corridor, specifically between Florin Road and Elsie Avenue-Mac Road to the south. And the goal of this project is to promote mode shift to active transportation by providing safer and lower-stress bicycle and pedestrian facilities, as well as to address the high number of injury collisions along this corridor. So just for some definitional stuff, Class 4 bikeways are specifically protected bikeways. So in this diagram, on the bottom right, basically it means there's some kind of vertical element separating the bike way from traffic, whether it's a flexible post or raised concrete median, which differentiates it from a Class 2 bike lane on the upper right. So as part of our Caltrans grants, we conducted a feasibility study to look at two different alternatives. One is a one-way Class 4 bike facility, which is like the left image. That's an example of a Class 4 in Rancho Cordova on Route 2 Road. And on the right image is a two-way Class 4 facility just north of here on North 12th Street, where you have a two-way bike path on the roadway. So the first alternative we looked at, again, was the one-way, Class 4, one-way flow on each side of the roadway, so it's your typical bike lane. And this, in addition to the bike improvements, the project would also install signalized pedestrian crossing and some sidewalk infill. Alternative 2 is the two-way bike path. That would be constructed on the west side of the roadway, two-way flow, would similarly have a signalized pedestrian crossing and some sidewalk gap closures. So coming out of the feasibility study, both alternatives worked from a traffic analysis standpoint. They both were similar in cost, but the feedback that we got from our stakeholder outreach to the Bicycle Advisory Committee and Disability Advisory Committee was that both of these groups preferred Alternative 1, which was the typical Class 1, or typical one-way bike flow on each side of the road. And that was generally due to better safety performance, as well as understanding of how users would use the facility, and just seemed more intuitive. So staff concur with that recommendation, moving forward into the design phase of the And then as part of this, we were also requesting a general plan amendment, because Stockton Boulevard is currently classified as a six-lane thoroughfare in the general plan. There's four lanes that exist today. So we wouldn't actually be doing a road diet and taking away a travel lane, we would just be reallocating that space. So instead of widening the roadway to do six lanes, we're instead going to allocate that space for the bikeways. And the Smart Growth Street also gives us additional future flexibility in terms of potential future BRT on this corridor. The Stockton Boulevard multimodal partnership with the city goes down to Florin Road and ends there. This would kind of pick up at Florin and go down to Mac Road. So in the future, should BRT be implemented on this corridor, the Smart Growth Street classification gives us additional flexibility with how the roadway would be configured. So with that, we're requesting that the board recognize the exempt status of the project under SEQA, specifically as it pertains to feasibility studies, receive and file the Complete Streets feasibility study, approve Alternative 1 from the feasibility study as we go into design, and direct the Office of Planning and Environmental Review, who we're working with, to begin the process of the general plan amendment for the Smart Growth Street classification and associate environmental review. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, comments. First of all, it's not, should BRT be implemented, it's when BRT is implemented. But, and you talked about, you know, traffic diets on Stockton Boulevard. There are areas, we need traffic diets on Stockton Boulevard to slow traffic down. I mean, it's no longer what it was intended to be when it was originally designed, and for the businesses that are there, the housing that's going in there, we need to give it a more pedestrian feel, and we can do that by making it so it's not a major artery where people are driving 60 miles per hour. And my third supervisor, Serna, and I were joking, but we were serious. You know, I think that there's, and I'm not putting words in his mouth on this one, because this might be controversial, is, you know, as we go forward, first of all, we have to work with the city closely, because as we know, Stockton Boulevard is city, county, city, county, city, county. And for it to be contiguous, it's going to take coordination. However, if we want to look at what not to do, just step outside of this building and see what's happening in downtown and midtown Sacramento with these bike lanes. It's, I hate it, and I hope that that's not what we're going to move toward on Stockton Boulevard. Can I be clearer than that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Could I put even a finer point?
Yes, you can.
So I agree with the chair that there's a lot to be desired in terms of having these very visible designated bike lanes. I think we can probably learn from the city's experience, but these plastic bollards in particular, that are optic green everywhere, it just does such a disservice to the streetscape as well. I think there's, you know, we're always trying to balance aesthetic, safety, and functionality. And I think we can learn from what has happened in midtown, downtown Sacramento, where you have this proliferation of these plastic bollards, in particular everywhere, that just really, again, as a native Sacramento, and I know this native Sacramento feels the same way, it really detracts from the, you know, from the beauty of the streets. So something to keep in mind, certainly.
Yeah, certainly. And in the feasibility study itself, it doesn't necessarily distinguish what the exact design is going to be, but I think we were envisioning it as raised concrete curbing, not the bollards in this case.
Thank you.
And then to your point about the BRT, yeah, the, as far as the Caltrans grant goes...
Don't worry, you don't have to address that. That was just me wearing my RT hat, so don't worry about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was, that was, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one. That's just a report back, or? No, we need to approve.
And there's no public comments, Chair.
There is?
No, there aren't any. I just want to go on record.
Okay. All right. Then I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, Flo. We have appointments?
For item 53, I need a motion to continue to October 22nd. You're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is the Housing Choice Voucher Program update.
Second.
Was that Mr. Serna or Mr. Desmond? Okay. Unanimous vote with those members present. Now we're on to nominations. Item 54, you're continuing to October 22nd, the American River Parkway Advisory Committee, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Human Services Coordinating Council, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to November 5th, Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnas, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item is the Adult and Aging Commission.
Nominate Suzanne Nye and continue the remainder to October 22nd.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to November 5th.
And I have a note to continue District 5 to October the 8th. First five commission.
Reappoint Beth Hassett and continue the remainder to October 22nd.
And Local Childcare Planning and Development Council.
Reappoint Deborah Ferguson-Doss and continue the remainder to October 8th.
Got it. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to November 5.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. We do have closed session. Before that, does the county exactly have comments?
Just a couple of quick ones, if you don't mind. As you are aware, as the boards are aware, that we have been working on our ambulance patient offload time, or wall time. We were on a list that one we weren't very proud of to be on, but we've been moving up quite considerably. And this week, we were notified by the state that we are one of the most improved APod times in the state, so we are definitely going in the right direction with that. And that's with the help of our hospital and our fire districts and private ambulance providers, our partners, and also with the help of Tim Lutz, our Director of Health and, or Health Services, Dr. Casirier, Dr. Kahn, and Mr. Dave Magneto. The other one I just wanted to share with you, if we can ask Metro Cable to put on the image, put up the image. I've talked about this a couple of times, but September 14th was Sacramento County Employee Night for the Sacramento FC Republic game. It was a huge success. We sold out all our sections. We had, well, we had a significant turnout, just under 300 staff showed up, and their families and friends. We all cheered on Sacramento FC against the Phoenix Rising Sun, and were triumphant in winning that game 2 to 0. After the game, we were all invited to come onto the field to take some pictures, or take a picture. This is maybe about two-thirds of the group. Some of the folks had to take off and leave early, but it was a great turnout. Looking forward to doing this again next year. They do have booths and spaces for us to set up, kiosks, if you will, to share the services that the county provides. So next year, we'll be doing that. We'll be providing those services and talking about either coming to work for the county or the different variety of services that we offer to really highlight the county's services. So it was a great success, and I really want to thank Kim Nava. She was instrumental in working all these details out. I had the fortune of just showing up and cheering and meeting everybody, which I always like to do, is to meet and shake hands with so many different county staff and their families. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments or questions from the board? All right. We will go into closed sessions. There will be no report out. We're adjourned.